Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this adjourned meeting of the City Council and ask the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsani.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon is absent. Connon.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
Also, Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. We've also been joined by Mayor Fry. The agenda is before us, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. I want to just welcome all of you tonight here at City Hall and recognize the other elected officials who are here. We have President Brad Bourne from the Park Board, along with Commissioners Meg Forney, Lundell French, Latricia Vita, and John O'Kogill. Welcome. Thank you for being here. We have David Wheeler from the Board of Estimate and Taxation. I think those are our elected officials who've joined us, so thank you again to all of you. Tonight's hearing is the third and final hearing that the City Council will be conducting about the 2020 Recommended Budget. Mayor Fry presented the 2020 Recommended Budget on August 15th, providing a proposed fiscal plan for the city's operations next year that totals $1.62 billion, with a property tax levy of about 6.95%. Since that time, the City Council, through its Budget Committee chaired by Councilmember Palmasano, has conducted a series of hearings to examine the details of each department's budget requests. The Budget Committee also conducted the first of our three public hearings on November 7th, and the City Council as a body conducted a second public hearing last Wednesday night, which is required under state law as part of the Truth and Taxation Law. On November 15th, Hennepin County mailed out notices which identified the total, the potential property tax impact, property tax impact, based on the mayor's recommended 2020 budget. That notice showed that the budget includes a property tax levy that equates to an additional $109 for the average home that has a median value of $264,500. The maximum tax levy was set by the Board of Estimate and Taxation at its meeting on September 25th. All of these meetings and hearings that I've talked about were noticed to the public, broadcast on public access television, and livestream from the city's website. As on-demand access to those broadcasts are still available from the city's TV channel and on the website. A copy of the proposed 2020 budget is posted on the Clerk's website, and a printed copy is available over there with the city clerk by the clock. All the documentation related to the proposed budget is also posted and available on the city's website. This past Friday, the Budget Committee conducted a markup of the mayor's proposed budget, which included a total of 26 amendments that were approved and forwarded to the meeting tonight. As I mentioned, this is the third public hearing on the budget proposal, which will give the community an opportunity to further give input on the plans that we've developed and the changes made on Friday during the council's markup session. So if you plan to address the council tonight as part of the hearing, please note that I'll be taking speakers in the order that they have registered. Speakers can register with the Clerk at the table outside the hallway, and if you'd prefer to submit written comments, the Clerks have forms that you can use to do that, again, also at that table. If you haven't already done so, and you do want to speak at the hearing, I'll invite you to register now. Before we open the floor to public comment, we'll have a very brief presentation from our Budget Director, Mica Intermill, about the contents of the proposed 2020 budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Bender, members, Mayor Fry. Mica Intermill, the city's Budget Director, and as the Council President said, here to give a brief overview of the budget that stands before you, which incorporates the amendments that were made through the Budget Committee on Friday. As the Council President mentioned, the mayor recommended a budget of $1.62 billion, which was structurally balanced in 2020 in all planning years. That structural balance continues following the amendments, though one of those amendments moved the debt service and capital expense associated with their new office building from 2020 into 2019. So that reduced the 2020 expense by about $90 million. The result of that is that this budget before you is $1.54 billion, which is $31 million or roughly 1.9% less than the 2019 council adopted budget. Now, this may not make a ton of sense why we're raising property taxes by about 7% when the budget is less, but that last bullet point on this slide highlights that the operating budget, so taking out the capital and debt expense, when we compare 2020 to 2019, is about $116 million or 9.5% greater than the prior year. So that's, that operating budget is what's driving the need for increased property taxes. In the budget, the major highlights are an affordable housing investment of over $30 million of local sources, plus about $10 million of federal monies, an interdisciplinary approach to public safety, including increases to the Office of Violence Prevention, investments in training through MPD, city attorney's office, fire, and others, and investment in economic inclusion through the creation of cultural districts across our city, expansion of the small business team to focus on small businesses owned by persons of color, and improved city operations, including additional funding for our elections in 2020, modernization of some of our core IT infrastructure, and other less notable changes. In terms of our capital budget, the, over the five-year capital improvement plan horizon, that budget is about $912 million. The bulk of that capital investment going to the Public Works Department. The budget includes some changes to our monthly utility rates of about $4 per month for the average household, or $51 per year. It's about a 4% increase. The increase from 2018 to 2019, for comparison, was 4.3%. As discussed, our 2020 levies that stand before you are about 6.95% greater than the 2019 levies. Each city dollar, so this includes all property tax dollars, utility rates, and other sources of revenue for the city, about $1 in $4 goes to Public Works, the next biggest category being capital improvement and following, following all the way down the line. This is a little bit different than the graph that you saw on Wednesday, which just looked at property tax dollars themselves. As the Council President mentioned, the impact of the proposed property tax levy increase is about $109 on the median valued home, which is valued at $264,500. And again, as I mentioned, I'll repeat myself from Wednesday, all, everybody in this room, everybody watching at home should be mindful of the property tax refund program offered by the state of Minnesota. There's a regular homestead credit and renter property tax refund program that's available to everybody, though there are income phase outs. So if you make a certain amount of income, then those refunds aren't available to you. There's also a special homestead credit. So if you live and own, live in and own your home, there, and you have a net property tax increase that's greater than 12% and at least $100, so there are a few requirements there, and the increase to your taxes is not related to improvements that you've made on your property, then you are eligible for this special homestead credit. So all of these programs are worthwhile. They can return hundreds of dollars to individuals. We're not just talking about tens, and that can be very meaningful depending on any individual circumstance. So folks can go to the website listed here for more information. That concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to yield the floor to our public testifiers.
Thank you, Mr. Intermill. Are there any questions for the Budget Director? I don't see any. So that brings us to our public hearing. Before we open up for public comment, I'll just very briefly go over some rules and expectations. We'll be taking speakers in the order that they're registered, so if you want to address the council and haven't registered, please do sign up. We've arranged for overflow seating in 319, which is located just across the hallway, and a live broadcast of this hearing is also taking place in that space. We have interpreters available in that room if anyone needs that assistance with interpretation. Each speaker tonight will be given two minutes from the timer. There will be a beep that will go off. I usually let people finish their sentence and then interrupt with a nice, kind reminder that the time has ended, something like "thank you." Some people's sentences are longer than others, so the intention isn't to, you know, not let you finish your thought, but also, just to make sure that everyone has time to finish. So that's the purpose of the timer. And we really ask, and this has never been a problem, but we ask that people be respectful of speakers and the opinions offered, not interrupting each other. We want to make sure that this hearing is a neutral place for all residents to have an equal opportunity to address the council members, and we know folks have a variety of opinions. So that is all I wanted to say. I'm excited to hear all that you are ready to tell us, and we'll begin with our first speaker, Speaker number one, Joe Tambourino.
President Bender, members of the council, good evening. My name is Joe Tambourino. I live at 545 South Second Street in the Mill District. I'm a downtown resident, downtown business owner, active in the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association, the DID Safety Collaborative, Hennepin Avenue Stakeholders Committee, and Hennepin Avenue Safety Committee. And tonight, I speak in support and want to thank the City Council and the mayor's office for the compromise, for the agreement of the public safety initiatives, including having our police department reach its authorized use-of-force level of 888 officers, as well as other crime prevention and crime safety programs. I think this was a very good compromise, and I thank the council as well as the mayor's office. The mayor has come to all different neighborhoods, specifically in the downtown area, North Loop, Mill District, Loring Park, and what I think that he has heard, the residents' concerns, as well as the city council has heard, are concerns with the increase in crime. And I think that what this shows is a good compromise and a way forward, something that's definitely needed in our future. So thank you, and I think the agreement is, is very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker two, Daniel Winston.
I'm gonna, I think this is the wrong committee for me to say what I want to talk about.
No, you can say anything. You could talk about housing here. You could talk about it. You can, this is the whole city council, so you can speak on your issue.
Speak, brother.
You're welcome to speak. We're taking testimony on the proposed budget, but lots of things relate to the budget. You're welcome.
I'm Daniel Winston, and I live in northeast Minneapolis. And this landlord that I got, Jim Lang, he took me to court in, I've been there four years. He took me to court in July, and I won in the courtroom, and he ended up paying me off. And then I had to pay rent again in October. I'm living in a three-bedroom apartment, and when I moved in, it was only $500. Then the other people that was in the building moved out, so I had to pay $1,500. So when I went to court, they dropped it down to $1,200. So within this time, he's been demanding my prescription medications and, you know, wanting me to work for him and things like this instead of taking the money. So I end up giving him my prescription medication and some designer sunglasses that he wanted. And now today, I end up getting eviction notice. I gotta be out in 24 hours. He didn't give me no receipts. So I'm stuck on what I, what I should do or who I should speak about, to speak to about it. So that's why I don't know if this was the right committee for me to.
Thank you. Yep, it's absolutely fine. If you want to leave your contact information with Mr. Carl, our clerk, we can have either your council member, or city staff, or some of the organizations that we funded to help renters, either HomeLine or Legal Aid, follow up. So you can give Mr. Carl your phone number or email address, and we can follow up as soon as the hearing is over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to hear that that is happening. We've had more and more problems like this. So I'm glad that you came today.
Okay.
And you can, Mr. Carl will take your info. Speaker three, Grace. Then we'll have Kathleen and Andrew.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for being here. My name is Grace Berkey, and I'm here this evening as a renter in Ventura Village, and also as a representative of the Powderhorn Park Neighborhood Association and the South Minneapolis Public Safety Coalition. I want to thank you for your work on this budget. While I was encouraged by the amendments presented by the council on Friday, shifting money to the Office of Violence Prevention and see it as a step in the right direction, unfortunately, I believe it is much too small a step. The urgency and need for street-level resources to address the opioid crisis and homelessness in our city, as well as other safety and livability concerns, will require significant dollar and resource investment. For example, in a proposal that the South Minneapolis Public Safety Coalition put together, we identified that a minimum of $10 million was required to fully resource strategies, tools, and programs on only 227 blocks in South Minneapolis alone. I urge you to be honest with yourselves and the residents of Minneapolis about the true cost of creating the kind of community we envision. Please do not settle for pilot programs and understaffed and underfunded resource allocations. Trust us as community members to understand the true cost of addressing the opioid crisis. The mayor's opioid task force that identified a list of tactics and strategies never included a budget. How are we as community members supposed to understand the significance of a $500,000 investment if we don't know what the true cost is? Again, I ask of you as our elected leaders to please quantify the true cost of a community where everyone is safe, housed, and has access to the resources that they need. Do not rest until our health, human services, housing, and community-led safety initiatives are fully funded. We look forward to continuing this conversation with you in 2020, although I wish I didn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker four, Kathleen Sullivan.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Sullivan. It's very nice to be with you all, and thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak. And I really just want to uplift what Grace has already said so well, and say that as a resident, as a taxpayer homeowner, I am willing and happy to pay my share to make possible real solutions to these serious problems that we are talking about, of the opioid crisis combined with homelessness, and the dignity of so many people in our community being sacrificed and impaired in some very significant ways. And I feel like we need big change, and yes, it's going to require big investment, and I am here for that. And I know many people in my community who are here for that, even though they can't physically be present tonight. I've spoken with some of them on the phone before coming to see about, trying to see who else could make it, and there's very many dedicated people out there who just couldn't make it this time to speak about it. And as a professional who is a social worker, licensed clinical social worker, and psychotherapist, I've been doing work in the community for 20-plus years in crisis outreach. In St. Paul, I used to work together with the police and apart from the police in dealing with mental health crisis for youth and families. And it is so, so effective to have an alternative to people calling 911 and getting a police response when their child or family member of any age is in a mental health crisis. And I know that that's part of what we're talking about here. So I just, I know the power of it, and I wholeheartedly support that and the other aspects of this proposal. So thank you very much for whatever you can do towards it.
Thank you.
Madam Council President, council members, mayor, thank you for hearing from me tonight. My name is Andrew Castenberg. I live at 2213 22nd Avenue South. I am a public school teacher, proud labor union member, and trying to be a proud citizen of our city. I came here tonight to talk about affordable housing and public housing, and the difference between the two. Recently, MPHA has applied for Section 18 for 717 scattered site units of public housing. The concern I have with our budget is that the difference between public housing and affordable housing is the cost to the resident is quite different between the two. We all know there are different levels of affordability with affordable housing. The risk is that our budget is, seems to be increasing our spending on affordable housing while risking that some of our existing public housing, which is at a deeper level of affordability, could be changed to a higher level of affordability. Therefore, the residents who are living in those buildings may not be able to afford them after the change goes through. I guess my question and concern is, should we be investing and increasing our investments in affordable housing for 50% AMI when we're not fully funding our current stock of public It's my first time up here. I'm a little nervous. So that, that's my big concern, and I just want to know if it makes sense to you guys, because if we add, you know, if we add 100 units of affordable housing at 50% AMI next year, but we lose, but we transition 717 units from 30% of the renters' income to 50% AMI, is that a gain or a loss? So, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker six, Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael Johnson. You ran a good meeting on the 4th. I appreciate everybody being here. So real quick, just a couple stories. A burglar hit about 80 coffee shops and restaurants and retailers, and now awaits charges. This after he was convicted of burglary, theft, drug possession, and helping an offender with murder. I did not know how committed you were to not arresting our way out of this. I did not know how committed you were to not criminalizing this or that. A woman on a light rail had a gun pointed at her face, was robbed, and that offender gets one year in prison. That's really interesting to me. If, if a woman, maybe I'm old-fashioned. Maybe if you point a gun at a woman, you should be buried underneath the jail, but that's just me. But we can't criminalize the youth, right? So what do you need 14 more cops for? You're not going to arrest anyone. You're not going to prosecute anyone. You're not going to charge anyone, and the judges are going to release everyone. So what's the next great idea? Oh, let's get rid of bail. What could possibly go wrong? Well, it's only for major crimes, kind of like maybe home invasion. Well, what happens when the prosecutor downgrades it to criminal trespass, like they have before in other cities? I don't know how you don't understand how, how crime is connected, how low-level drug dealers, that's one of my favorites too. Who the heck do you think is shooting up your city? Violent, we got robberies, home invasions, drive-bys, violence in the schools, violence on buses, where I guess it's a death penalty when you say, "Can you please be quiet?" 75-year-old guy gets killed, that's just lovely. Violence in the warehouse district, violence in malls, violence on the light rail, violence in the light rail stations. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker seven, Ms. Nicole. Then we'll have eight, Al. Nine, Alicia. And 10, Al Jr. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Nicole Miller. I live in the Falwell neighborhood of north Minneapolis. I am pleased to be going after this gentleman, because I agree too that more police isn't going to fix the problem, and the one thing that he didn't get to was the root of the problem. And the root of the problem is mental and emotional health in my community, and the marginalization of people in my community. That's what leads to crime. That's what leads to violence, is people put into survival mode and forced to make very hard decisions on a daily basis. I went through the proposed budget, and I like to play with numbers and I like to play with words. The word "healing" shows up in the proposed budget twice. The words "trauma-informed" show up eight times. The words "mental health" show up 32 times. Those three phrases show up for a total of 42 times. The word "police" shows up 156 times. If policing was going to help our problem, it would have happened by now. We have had plenty of police for plenty of years, and it's not improving anything. So to continually invest in something that's not yielding positive results seems a little immature, seems a little naive, seems a little irresponsible. Okay? None of us in here knows everything. We all know a little bit of something about this or that. But the most important thing we can all do is be vulnerable. So I'm going to try to be vulnerable for 15 seconds and talk about the fact that it wasn't police that got me right with my life. It was places like Emerge. It was places like the Minneapolis Urban League. It was community spaces like Sammy's Avenue Eatery. Okay? It was being in community with people that understood the struggles that I had gone through and the things that I had gone through, and working through that trauma that got me to a place where police interactions are no longer a part of my narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker eight, Al. Then we'll have Alicia, Al Jr., and Monica.
Thank you, Chair Bender, and Mayor Fry, and the City Council. I'm coming to say one more time, our, our community has organized, we're ready to deal with our violence. You took care of downtown now, Mayor Fry. When we ran for mayor, you said you was going to take care of all of us. Now you took care of downtown. I heard what he said, the first speaker. We've been fighting. I've been meeting with Councilmember Ellison, Cunningham, and yourself. I gave y'all the proposal that the community, I can't do the work, but I know who can. I have organized it. I'm speaking as an African-American descendant of a slave. I'm speaking for my community. I'm speaking as a person that worked with the Urban League, worked with the black churches, worked with everybody in our community in Minneapolis and St. Paul to deal with Biden. So you won't have one of the speakers before Mr. Cole get up and say what he's saying. I know what he's saying is, it's a subliminal message about blacks. He just didn't say it, but everybody up there know what he talking about. So this, I'm saying to this, I'm saying to our community, we got to stand up. We got to do something, and you keep smiling when I'm talking. Yeah, you keep smiling. Ain't nothing to smile about, about our depth. 240 people.
Come correct, Al. Come correct, please.
Yeah, I'm coming correct, but keep, keep that kind of look on your face when I'm talking about depth in our community. Keep that kind of look on your face. We fighting out here, and you're not helping. This city council and mayor is not helping the African-American community.
Are you serious?
Are you, are you serious? Are you serious? I ain't helping, and you, I'm, I'm out there every day.
Do what you do best disappear.
Yeah, you know, don't, 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 don't do that no more, man. Don't do that, don't do that. No, no, control your counsel.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to let.
Control your counsel. He made me lose my thought on what I'm fighting about, my people.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to let Speaker finish.
And so I'm saying, I'm fighting. It's serious. There ain't no time to have no friends no more.
Mr. Flowers, please direct your comments to me.
Hey, say that to him. Reproman him. Reproman him. Don't reprimand me. Reproman him. Because this is, this is, it's our time. It's African-American time. We are not going to let y'all continue to play like we ain't here, even if we got people sitting on the city council, and that's not, not, I'm not talking about Councilmember Jenkins. I'm not talking about Councilmember Watsani. I'm talking about where all the death is happening, over in the 4th and 5th Ward. I got to say it, and I got to say it publicly. And you should not have cut no deal without saying something within our community so we can help our people, Mayor Fry. You should have did that. You shouldn't, you can't do this no more. And I'm telling our community, our people, you got to stand up. You got to turn the place out. Don't let just reclaim the block come down here and say, well, what to do. We have to stand up as a community if we want to stop what's happening, and if we want to create wealth in our community, we have to do it. And y'all must, you got to reprimand, recommend us like you recommend everything else you're doing with immigration, everything else you're doing. Put us on the top right now. We don't want 240 people die, shot, over 45 dead. Look at us. And I'm not, I'm, that's what I'm here for today. That's, I'm not going, y'all ain't going to do it no more, and I'm telling the young people, you got to rebel. So if ain't nothing in this budget, when y'all get through making, cutting all these deals, if ain't nothing in the budget to help our community with violence, African-Americans, and I hope reclaim the block staying with us, but we must rebel. We cannot let them do it, or you're going to have 50 more deaths in 2020. Don't let them do it. It's election time. Let's, let's stand up to them. Don't let it happen. That's what's going on.
Thank you. We'll get ready for Speaker nine. We'll get ready for Speaker nine, Alicia. Welcome. And then Speaker 10 will be Al Jr., 12, Monica. Go ahead, thank you.
Good, good evening, Mr. Flowers, that's a lot of passion there, and I identify with that. I don't get as boisterous as he does, it's just not in me, but it is a serious issue, it's beyond a state of an emergency in the community, and it's not just in North Minneapolis, it's everywhere, and like Grace mentioned about the South Side Safety Coalition, as the executive director of the Corcoran Neighborhood, I see it all too often, and I happen to do a lot of work, and what Mr. Flowers was mentioning, there's been over 30 organizations meeting for the last year, black organizations focusing on the African-American problem, because we see that these numbers are stark, we are dying and suffering at a rapid rate, and at this pace, there looks like there is no hope for the future of our people, and our young people are growing up in a war zone, and that is scary, because I'm raising two young amazing, amazing young men, and I get the privilege of watching them, and boys that look like them play and have a great time, but it's only a matter of time before they are criminalized if they haven't been already. And so my children happen to be privileged, because I happen to be educated, and I know better, so I do better. But sometimes, everybody doesn't have the fortune of knowing, and it is time that we take some time and give the community, the African-American community, an opportunity to address the inequities and the issues going on within the African-American community. Not that there are not other issues affecting other people, but it is affecting us at a much different rate. We have a different perspective, we have a different lived experience in this country as descendants of the slaves. It is true, our experience is unique and not like anyone else's, and we have trauma, historical trauma rooted in the very way in which we are addressing and talking to each other every day. And so like Mr. Flowers was saying, it is time, we do have to rebel, we can no longer ask for permission, we have to move, and we have to do it with the urgency, like it's happening to your children today, tomorrow, and it will continue to happen. It is a really scary number to hear that over 240 people have been shot, and over 40-something people have been killed in the city of Minneapolis, and 30 in St. Paul. So I ask you to reconsider and to consider community-based solutions when you're talking about addressing the violence and the trauma in the African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 10, Al Flowers Jr.
How y'all doing? My name is Al Flowers Jr. I'm not here where Reclaim the Block, I'm not here with the police either. I'm here as a descendant of a slave. I'm here as an African-American male who sits out on these same streets, on whichever blocks we talking about, but we're out there on Broadway and Lyndale, who sat out there, who watched these victims of death, who watched these victims of overdose, heroin, everything that's infuctuated within our city, downtown Minneapolis, we've been in them places. So when I come here today, I'm not coming here to say that we don't need the more police officers, we don't need that, I just find it ironic that when I first came to this meeting back in '08, '09, when my dad, when I was 16, 15, we was in here talking about the same thing, we was in here talking about the same problems, the same people not looking at us, and what irritates me the most is when brothers like Mr. Ellison, who come in the neighborhood, when you trying to get elected, and everybody following your back, but when the deaths is coming, we can't see you, brother, and now all of a sudden, you real boisterous. But we can see that then, we don't see that same thing, we don't see none of that, Mr. Cunningham, we don't see that, we can't see y'all at the same meetings that y'all need to be at, and then y'all go to these other organizations and say, "What y'all going to do to help prevent violence?", we not coming to the people who's out there trying to prevent the violence. You not coming to the people who actually out there trying to do it. We the one that's being affected, these are the people that's dying out there. It's to hurt you, hey man, if you got something to say, you going to have your time, brother. You going to have your time. I hope it's something that's going to help us for once. Because I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and we still talking about it. Every time the violence, we dying, it's our people dying. I know for a fact, if it was any other race that was dying like this, y'all would be making it happen. If it was white, if it was Somali, if it was Mexican, y'all would be making it happen. If it was Latino. But with the African-Americans, it can't happen. And then everybody want to come off our deaths, off the back of our deaths, and say, "Hey, y'all need to help them, put money into the programs for them", but they not working with the people who got to actually deal with these families that's dying on a regular day basis. So when y'all do do this budget, consider the groups who's really out there fighting. And when y'all come back around when it's time for reelection time, remember how y'all acting right now, keep that same energy.
Thank you. Speaker 12, Monica Love.
Lisa, what is you up there laughing when you talking about that? Okay, well, no, calm down, you can't calm him down, he's a city council member.
All right, we are on speaker number 12, and I would like Ms. Love to have her time.
Good evening, Council. My name is Monica Love. I work with two organizations within, one in Minneapolis and one in St. Paul as administrative supporter, and also a program director. The program director I work with centered on youth, is in Minneapolis, right on Oliver and Penn, and we are in the 4th Ward, okay? My specific concern, my specific request is for the council to support what we are doing. Our organization is also a member of the Minnesota Safe Streets Initiative. We focus specifically with Koi on youth intervention and prevention to crime, intervention and crime prevention. We see it on the streets, we see it in the nightly news, we read about it in the newspapers, we hear about it from our children, and witness it firsthand, and I'm sure that we all have some type of experience with youth violence. Young people getting into fights and shootouts in our neighborhoods, shopping malls, on the playground, and in schools. It's disturbing and troublesome, both for our nation's youth and also for our society as a whole. Violence among children and adolescents is a significant public health problem. It's a public health problem. It's not just a specific community problem or a black problem, it is a public health problem. If you wanted to do something to stop this violence, then we recommend that you support the Minnesota Safe Streets Initiatives. It's often best to get the expert advice from organizations and agencies that are members of this initiative. What we have specifically, agencies, is the Council on Minnesotans Heritage, Minneapolis NAACP, Twin Cities Urban League, Minneapolis Police Department, Centered on Youth, Minneapolis Park and Rec, A Mother's Love, and Coach McKenzie's Enterprise. And what we are asking, and I'll leave you with two questions, what is the city council's strategies for prevention, preventing youth violence in the city of Minneapolis? And the second question, can we be assured that the council will support the Minnesota Safe Streets Initiatives? Those are my last two questions, and please support our initiative. We would like to work as partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 13, Anthony. Then we'll have John. And if we can have our speakers kind of line up, maybe a couple after, so 13, 14, and 15 will be next.
Good evening, good evening, my name is Anthony, and I'd just like to say a few things. I didn't think we was living in Texas. I don't believe we're living in Alabama, Kentucky, Indiana, Virginia, the Carolinas. I don't, I, well, I thought we were staying in the state of Minnesota. I thought the state of Minnesota was predominantly Democratic state, who believed in the Democratic philosophy. I'm sorry, I just, that's what it is. But it seems to me that we stay in like a colonized state, like a state that just like stands all on its own, like, do whatever you want to do to African-Americans. And just, and feel as though that's okay, that is funny, that lives are being lost on the streets of Broadway, Lake Street, surrounding areas, that's funny. Minneapolis, just had the Super Bowl a couple years ago. Minneapolis, all these beautiful structures that's being built, Mall of America being added on, new additions and stuff, Minneapolis, Minnesota, I'm sorry? Because if it's a joke, then you guys probably need to just move somewhere else. And let the real people who believe in a Democratic philosophy, not saying that I'm a Democrat or, but it don't matter, but if you believe in that philosophy, then you guys should try to make some change, because ain't nothing changing, not for the convicts, not for the people that's out there fighting, putting their lives on the line, coming out of our pockets to feed people on the street? Low Caesar's Pizza? And that's funny, that's laughable. That's something that you guys look at and be like, oh, it's just them. Well, just them going to come up and be like, yeah, it's just y'all now. So, I mean, we got to be able to be smarter than that, we're human, we're not creatures of any other, you know, dog descent, or cats, or felines, reptiles, we're human beings, the most advanced species on the planet Earth, and we acting like this in the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Speaker 14, John. Then we'll have 15, 16, 17, please get ready to speak next. Thank you.
My name is John Senior, and I'm a resident of North Minneapolis. I live at 3651 4th Street North, right off of Dowling. And as you've heard from many speakers, who are not satisfied, to say the least, about the violence in the city and why it continues, and the resources given to it are minimal, and your budget, this budget really reflects that. It's more about infrastructure, so to speak, physical infrastructure for the city, rather than to help people. I don't know when you're going to get around to dealing with the human aspect of it, as has been witnessed by the former speakers that spoke before I come to this podium, but I think you really need to take in consideration what the citizens of the city who pay for all this to begin with really need. And if you have to up the budget so that we can have some human resources in order to deal with some of these problems, that's what you need to do. I mean, we're already charged and paying taxes and so forth, and we hire you people through elections and so forth to do our business while we go raise the money to pay for it, and it's about time, what some of us say, maybe we need to take back some of this power unto ourselves and take the time out to run our own city, since we're the residents and the owners of it. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, sir.
Kamara Julia Bashar, they them pronouns, recovering New Yorker, and now a resident of the 8th Ward. I work as both a local and bi-coastal actor. My work simplified is about embodying narrative, and I think a lot about embodying the narrative of Minneapolis. So when I heard that we were investing only $242,000 in the Office of Violence Prevention, I really questioned how I could, like, sat on my floor and cried about it, like, a couple times today, actually. You know, I thought maybe I could tell myself, "Other cities don't even have this, something is better than nothing." But then I started to place this number into a context to see if I could actually name that shamefully small amount something. I thought about Raven Gant, a black woman murdered on Thanksgiving by her partner. The cost of a funeral in Minnesota can get up to $12,000. An average of 19 deaths in Minnesota over the last three years were from homicide related to intimate partner violence. $242,000 is only enough to bury 20 people. I thought about the fact that reparations haven't been paid, and we're putting $8.2 million into the police department, an institution that was fortified during reconstruction to ensure that black voices would not ever have the power or the strength to ask for what they're worth. I thought about how enslaved black person would today be approximately $40,000. And since not much has changed in the way that the system values black folks, it's not off-base to say that this money is only worth about six black lives. Something is better than nothing, but no matter how much you costume it, this is still nothing. Good directors in my industry will tell you that when you're talking about embodying a narrative, if you remove context for the actors, you remove consent. $242,000 is a total removal of context, which in this narrative makes the police, the city, and the mayor of Minneapolis violators of consent. And if you don't like that narrative, you should change it.
Thank you. Speaker 16, Nick.
Good evening, my name is Nick. I live at 1721 University Avenue, Southeast, 55414. I'm a University of Minnesota student, and I'm here to share a story about the need for more community-based alternative solutions to policing, specifically that of mental health. I live in a housing cooperative, which I'm a member owner, and a couple months ago, one of our member owners, who suffers from illness of alcoholism, got into relapse and became violent towards a lot of the community members that we were living with, and this happened over the course of the days, and we tried to deal with it internally, and ended up really being harmful to a lot of us in the community. And the whole time, we could have called the police, we could have gone through the city mechanisms to prevent violence from happening, but the whole time, none of us trusted that police would come and wouldn't further escalate the issue. None of us had trust in the city sanctioned way to deal with these things, so we had to deal with it by ourselves, and because of that, more violence was caused towards the members of our community. And so with this budget, I personally, and my community, would love to see that money going towards real solutions for folks that are suffering from illnesses and mental health issues, that when violence does come up, there's actual protocol and structural solutions that aren't, you know, that don't suck, and that don't further escalate situations of violence. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 17, Kristin. Then David, Sophia, and Meg.
Hello, my name is Kristin, and I'm with Reclaim the Block tonight. I live in West Bank, off of 5th Street. A week ago, community members waited hours for their chance to come up to the podium and share their perspectives. Dozens and dozens shared the same message, fund our communities, don't hire more cops, fund solutions to the opioid crisis, fund housing for young people, fund mental health crisis teams, fund violence prevention. We don't need more police, we need real solutions. People took time from their busy lives to do that, because we've been told that's the way to participate in this process. That's how we have our voices heard. It seems that our dozens of voices fell on ears that are not ready to listen. You all have made almost no significant changes to the mayor's budget. The mayor's cadet class amendment will still put more cops on the street than we have today, even if he calls it a compromise aimed at improving police community relations. We're glad and thankful that you all were able to find money to fund a trans equity position, to fund a wage theft enforcement position, to give a little bit of extra support to the Office of Violence Prevention. These things really matter, and will make a significant difference in the lives of people I love. So many of us were thrilled two years ago, when we thought we had just elected one of the most progressive city councils in the country. Being progressive means making hard political decisions to move us forward, not being stuck in the status quo. It means centering historically and systematically robbed black and brown folks, knowing that things will get better for all of us by doing this. You all aren't leading us forward progressively, you're not even following the lead of your constituents who spoke up last week. What's it going to take? Be the leaders we elected you to be, or be forced out. The community deserves so much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 18, David. Then Sophia.
Hey, everybody. My name is David, and I live in Mitterer Village. This is actually my first time here. Just want to say that Minneapolis can be a city where all of us have safe spaces to live, where our neighbors who are dealing with addiction or mental health crises can get the support that they need, and we are getting underneath the root causes of violence. We've been saying this loud and clear since the start, we have the smarts, skills, and resources to build that city. And the only way we can get there is by taking a close, hard look at the police budget. This, thank you very much, is $193.40. This represents the $193.4 million that Mayor Frye has proposed to give MPD this year. That's more than one-third of the money in the general fund. Out of the $193.4 million that the police have been giving, we all agreed on Friday to give $242,000 for violence prevention. That's like taking this quarter, a little bit less than this quarter, out of this pile of money, and moving it over here. Here's the thing- Here's the thing, I'm with y'all. This quarter actually really matters because the folks at the Office of Violence Prevention can make this money do a lot of work in our communities. We all know the folks who somehow managed to feed a roomful of people on a shoestring budget like this. But just because we can stretch a dollar doesn't mean that we have to keep doing it, especially when our city has more than enough money to address the issue. When we look at the size of this pile, and we look at the size of this pile, we learn a lot about what I think our city cares about. Tonight is your last chance to carve out a different path for our city where this pile doesn't keep growing year after year without any accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker nineteen, Sophia.
Hi. My name is Sophia Benard. I live at thirty-six seventeen Thirty-third Avenue South, Ward twelve. We need you to do better. The current draft of the budget still has $400,000 for responding, still has only $400,000 for responding to opioid crisis. Not enough for violence prevention, not enough for our city's young people. We know you understand how vital this work is. You've said over and over that it matters to you. On Friday, at the budget markup, many of you said you wanted to see the city do more around violence prevention, intimate partner violence, and safety beyond policing. But you said a lot of those things last year, too. And so right now, it is hard for us to trust your words because we don't see them turning into action. Here is what we are asking. First, that you make amendments to move meaningful amounts of money out of MPD's enormous budget and into some of the priorities we've laid out. It is not progressive to find tiny corners to cut when the biggest slice of the pie remains untouched. And I love pie. And second, we're asking each of you to make a public commitment to work with communities to make major investments in the safety beyond policing in the years to come by taking money out of MPD's bloated budget. So when testimony ends and it's your turn to talk, if you commit to stepping up next year and moving real money, and not pennies, or a part of a quarter, out of MPD's budget and into alternatives next year, please make that commitment on the record by saying, "I'm ready to actually invest in safety beyond policing." Our city is ready, and we deserve better. Show us what real progressive leadership looks like. We'll be here.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker twenty, Commissioner Forni.
I'm Meg Forni, thirty-two oh-one Zenith Avenue South, and I'm a park board commissioner. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you today. Between Thanksgiving and the new year, most cultures acknowledge their gratitude in some form or another. I personally want to thank you electeds who are here serving the city. Thank you. As one of the lead commissioners in bringing in the fruition of the twenty-year Neighborhood Park Plan, I saw firsthand how the park board and the city can work together for the betterment of Minneapolis. We are tied at the hip, so to speak, not just through the unique group called the Board of Estimate and Taxation, but through collaborative initiatives like our shared service agreements to divide work of attending to our streets and trees, our water management procedures, which I look forward to furthering, our civil services processes, our collective bargaining, and many other coordinated efforts. I applaud the mayor's convening of the youth coordinating board to lead the initiative identifying shared resources for our youth and appreciate that our own superintendent is taking such an active lead in that coalition of government entities, our schools, as well as Hennepin County. As Mayor Frye wrote in his September twenty-sixth opinion exchange for the Star Tribune, "We can identify areas, pursue efficiencies, move forward, and on innovative programming through regular sustained communication." We are unique in that we have an independent park board that for over one hundred and thirty-five years has permanently preserved, protected, maintained, improved, and enhanced its natural resources, parkland, and recreational opportunities for current and future generations. I am grateful for our relationship that separates and at the same time collaborates. Sobering, though, is the recent action of our board's leadership to amend our superintendent's recommended budget. May I continue? One that was balanced financially, as well as aligned with all of our board's strategic directions and performance goals, those being investing in youth, be financially sustainable, protect the environment, and engage communities of power. Yet, in amending the budget just last week, over forty amendments, the only strategy addressed was regarding youth. Those amendments are because of mistrust of you, the city, conditioning our forestry outreach coordinator, tree preservation coordinator, for not even one year. Now, many people apply for a less than one-year job. Politicizing and tokenizing our youth employment innovation initiatives through one-time transfers and smoke-and-mirrors financing that actually breach policy. Denying park patrol and park agent, as well as official officer positions, that our park expansion needs to safeguard our growing city's population and maintain our current record of having only 2% of the city's crime in our parks. Little Earth residents have pleaded with us to keep our kids safe with a viable police source. And topping this amended budget off, pushing staff to perform beyond their time, resources, and structural capacity, out and out punitive. Thank you. I look forward to next year, and I wish all of you a very wonderful 2020.
Thank you so much. Speaker twenty-one, Alisa Clemens. Twenty-two, Commissioner Kogel. Twenty-three, can all kind of get ready. Thank you.
I just want to say some names first. Christina Williams, Raven Gant, Kirsten Nelson and William, Justin O'Neill Harris. Those are all people killed in Minneapolis in domestic violence this year. Justin was a father. Kirsten and her children were killed. Raven Gant was killed. And Christina Williams was paralyzed when she was shot in front of her children by her significant other. Over two hundred and fifty people shot in Minneapolis this year. Over forty-five or forty-five murdered. You don't ever ask us to come before the council to talk about those people. You only ask us to come when you want to use the divide between the Police Department and the black community. That's shameful to me. A white woman spoke at your last meeting. She said, "There are non-controversial funds that you can use to fund us fighting in the community." Our mothers' love fought really hard in the community this summer. We didn't get support. I called council members. I called the mayor. We didn't get support. So when you're talking about investing in people fighting in the community, I don't know that I believe you mean that. When you talk about the Office of Violence Prevention, I do support that. But what I want you to understand is, one of the main components of that is GVI. And all of you have great things to say about GVI. But what you don't say is GVI is successful because they work in a partnership with the Minneapolis Police Department. That's what you don't say. We're better together. We need to not be called in here to just talk about police funds. We need to be called in here to talk about the issues that are happening in our community. And we do need you to support it. I know I usually come in here yelling holler, "I'm sick." And I really am tired, and I'm emotional. And I just won't say these names again. I'm so sorry. Christina Williams, Raven Gant, Kirsten Nelson and William, and Justin O'Neill Harris. Remember them.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-two, Commissioner Kogel. And then we'll ask Speakers twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five to get ready. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Council President Bender. Thank you, Mayor Frye. Thank you, members, for allowing me to speak. John O.Kogel, I live at nineteen-ten First Avenue South in the Stevens Square neighborhood. And I'm here tonight to first just thank the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the entire council for being a great collaborator with the park board. We are happy that we got the level of servants increased to our levy. It has, however, required us to make some difficult changes to our budget to ensure that we are realizing the main priorities of our board, which are to invest in young people, especially notably investing in expansion of our teen teamwork program, which is a critical part, I think, both of getting young community members involved in our park system, but also expanding that vision of having a multi-layered approach to public safety. The other thing that I want to mention is that the two tree preservation and outreach coordinator positions that are one-time funded are a critical piece of our ongoing, really big investment in dealing with climate change. And I want to thank the council also for declaring a climate emergency. It is critical that we have done that, and it's critical that we continue our partnership. And the park board looks forward to being a partner in that work going forward. So, in conclusion, thank you all for your support and look forward to next year.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-three, welcome.
Hi, my name is Dan Kaniewicz. I am a homeowner at four-four-one-three Fourteenth Avenue South in Ward eleven. I appreciate your time, council members, today. Thank you so much. I'd like to speak here today in support of the proposals by Reclaim the Block. I do feel, as an educator and as a school psychologist, that I have had a lot of experiences directly with the school-to-prison pipeline and the factors that play into that. There are a lot, as a school psychologist, I am taxed with assessing students who demonstrate behaviors that are often at risk or warning signs for future experiences with incarceration and criminal justice system. My job is to assess why those situations occur in order to prevent them. The assessment process always looks at the function of the problem. It's an emotional function, or it's a lack of primary needs being met. And I would like to see our budget reflect an investment in prevention and addressing the true nature of these issues as opposed to a punitive response to the symptoms of those issues. I think that a failure to adequately endorse, or, excuse me, a failure to adequately fund organizations such as the Office for Violence Prevention is an endorsement of their demise or their failure. And I think they'll do a great job with the funds they have, to be clear. But I would like to see them adequately funded to do the work that we know that they truly can do. Furthermore, I would also just like to say that investing in prevention is fiscally responsible. There's no reason not to embrace prevention, with the exception of simply wanting to take a punitive approach to these issues. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-four, Lewis.
I swear, our reality is a nightmare. The dreams are being crushed because we don't fight fear. We end up in a system from shooting at rivals that hit an innocent victim that could have been my brother right there. That could have been me and you or a mother right there. The father went away, imagine what her kids would go through. The daughter had a daughter at sixteen, and her son was shooting a twenty-two way before he was twenty-two. We in a cycle of more money than more problems, more murder with no justice. How could we solve them? Broken families from coke lines and open bottles. It's no lie that the sky's falling, but no item. Soak this all with no hope for tomorrow. Hoes in our hearts got our souls hollow. Don't have no power to ball, just play the powerball with hope to hit the lotto, growing up without a role model. I got a mind filled with dreams, page full of paint. Heart turned cold with a soul burning flames. Million-dollar thoughts in a pocket full of change. I took so many losses, but we all go through things. So when life got you down, try to stay up. Bow my head and I pray the Lord save us. Because before we change the world, we must change us. Just hope to see a better day when I wake up. That peace right there is wake up. And when we're not woke, we sleep. And when we sleep, our eyes are closed. And when our eyes are closed, we're in complete darkness. And I feel like I have been somebody who's grown up in complete darkness for twenty-one years of my life. And now I'm twenty-two, and I'm just now being able to see the light. And what that has done is created a mentality of see me, not being valued and treated for who I am as an individual. And that caused me to make bad decisions and take risks, and almost cost me my life. I'm standing here to just say, we need to get out of this point of see me into a point of I see and understand that we all are worthy to be here and we deserve to be respected and valued for who we are. I just got two very small things I want to address. One is, we need to intentionally invest into the youth in our personal development and our professional development. Also, the youth, we're tired of people speaking for us, saying that the youth need this, bringing us out to these events, saying that your story is important, but not really taking what we're seeing and creating actionable steps that's for us and by us, and having us a part of the conversation. Another thing that I just want to say, I want to address this to the entire community on both sides, whatever side you're on. We need to add understanding and subtract the shame. You know, we all got stories to tell. We all come from a different background, and we all got things going on. But if we're going to thrive as a community and move the needle, we need to add understanding and subtract the shame. My name is Lewis McCalip, other known as Louis Blaze. I'm born and raised here, been here my whole life. Artist, entrepreneur, and activist. And thank you very much for letting me speak.
Speaker twenty-five, Pete. Then we'll ask twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight to come on up, get ready to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Gamatis. I live on Seventh and Main Street in northeast Minneapolis. And I'm here to voice my support for the changes that Reclaim the Block have presented. We really need to invest more in communities. And I want to look back about a year ago when I started meeting with some of the council members in conjunction with the group I'm part of to focus and look at some of the racial disparities in policing in Minneapolis. And one of the facts that we talked about was, when you specifically look at equipment violations and the stops for that, if you're black, you are six times more likely to get pulled over. And once pulled over, you're four times more likely to get searched. And when we had these conversations, of course, everyone was like, "We shouldn't have these racial disparities." But, you know, with the police, that's the mayor's responsibility. And sorry, there's not much we can do. The only things that we can really control is the budget and the police contract. Fast forward, now we're to the police budget. And from my perspective, what it seems like is that the council has pretty much rubber stamped what the mayor has proposed. And what the mayor has proposed, you've moved around dollars, pennies, here and there, but that doesn't reflect a real desire to make changes within policing. As you know, policing and criminalizing things, that's what leads to mass incarceration. I don't think any of you want to be part of mass incarceration, but continually focusing on police as a solution is what drives mass incarceration. So you need to understand your role in that. Second, I think back to last Friday when this compromise was announced. And one of the things that the mayor said, that this was one of his proudest days as being mayor, and I don't share those same feelings. I was extremely disappointed, frustrated, and losing hope that we can do something meaningfully different in the city of Minneapolis. You are elected as one of the more progressive Democrat liberal council members, and we're not seeing fundamental changes. We need changes to how we do public safety in Minneapolis, and that doesn't require more funding of police. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-six?
Hi. Madam Chair and council members, Mayor Frye. I was thinking back to our first public safety meeting back in the education center over on the north side. And from that time till this moment, I've consistently heard the community say that we don't want more police. And it's been said repeatedly, over and over and over. And people have offered solutions, community-based solutions to the problems that the police are alleged to have solved. But we're still left with the problems. Thurman Blevins family, Jamar Clark's family, Travis Jordan's family, they're still grieving. They didn't get $20 million. Perhaps the Minneapolis Police Department should pay back $20 million of our funds before they demand more to go out and terrorize our community again. Last year, we were at this time over at the Fourth Precinct, purifying a tarnished space that had been decorated with a Christmas tree with malt liquor cans, menthol cigarettes, and spicy snacks. And that's what passed as a celebration of Christmas at the Fourth Precinct. Here we are. And so we were told fourteen cops, and now it's thirty-eight? How can you lie like that? How can you sit there and lie to us? It's ridiculous. It's shameful. And we said at the first meeting, we can't hold people who are appointed accountable, but we sure can hold elected people accountable. And I intend to do that. And I intend to do that and work to do that and work towards holding people accountable. I'm ashamed. I'm completely ashamed. We've said it repeatedly, but evidently, we're not being heard. And I just want to remind you that Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King said, "A riot is the language of the unheard."
Thank you. Speaker 27, Nikki, welcome. We'll ask 28, 29, 30 to come on up.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Mabry. I am a former resident of Minneapolis. I am now the Community Engagement Manager at People Serving People at 614 3rd Street As a person that trains practitioners in trauma-informed care and a person that sees daily at our family shelter the impact of deep trauma, deep pain, absolute panic, in parents and families experiencing their very worst, I come with a message from our families. We need you to hear and center the most vulnerable members of our communities right now, and hearing and centering the most vulnerable members of our communities is not more investment in the police state. To stand with us shoulder to shoulder at the 4th Precinct and then invest the very system that systematically traumatizes our people every day is disingenuous. It is a betrayal, and your actions on this budget will be well noted. We come to you as your friends, as people that have supported you for years throughout your political career, in an understanding that we have a partnership here. To invest more monies in the police is a breach of that partnership. It cannot stand. To invest not nearly enough in office of violence programming is insulting, it's disrespectful, and you have an opportunity to make a different decision. Please do so.
Thank you. Speaker 28, Jesse, welcome.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council members. I live near the Midtown Station and house and work downtown, and I want to testify again because we have a modified budget proposal on the table. I feel disappointed, I feel angry, because to me, this is not an acceptable compromise. In my neighborhood, and you've heard from a lot of people in my neighborhood who are doing amazing frontline public safety work that's not rooted in criminalization, that's rooted in solving some of the fundamental problems around violence, and what we have today is, to me, not even a compromise because you're not funding, no one has come forward in this budget to say, "Our value is to make a big push to transform violence in Minneapolis." What you say on the stump is not nearly as important to me as what you say in this budget, and so to have a budget that comes forward with a huge increase in funding for our police department, to have a situation where the police chief can come forward and demand a giant financial change, and yet nobody, among the leaders who I'm looking to, is bringing a giant change in funding for efforts that address root causes, is really disappointing. My property taxes are going up, and you know, I'm okay with that. I'm willing to pay for a city that provides justice, that provides services, that improves people's lives. Like, that's what I'm here for in Minneapolis, but I'm not willing to just keep handing piles of money to a department that has systematically and repeatedly refused any accountability that elects for a workforce that keeps electing a Bob Kroll, for a workforce that's popular with officers that my national out, a block party, who are there defending to me when Bob Kroll says, "Hey, we need cops who are willing to use violence. We need cops who are willing to intimidate with violence." Right? Like, that's what I hear on the street, that's what I hear from other people talking about this police department, and if you don't change the money, there's no accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 29, welcome.
What's up, y'all? Some of y'all might remember me. I'm here to represent Chicago once again, and let me just tell y'all, it's better to fix, I mean, it's better to build strong children than to fix broken adults. That's Frederick Douglass who said that. And speaking of which, I'm gonna speak a little bit about slavery tonight. Last time I talked to y'all about black history, we gonna talk about that a little more. So, first of all, if y'all wanted to give a title to what I'm about to say, I will call it "The Reminder." Let me remind y'all that Jake the Snake was gone for a long time when people was talking, and he was gone while I was talking, so I'm definitely glad that you're here, 'cause you gonna hear what I have to say this time. First of all, as far as history is concerned, he only got elected because of what I call the JFK effect. JFK, even though he ended up being, you know, a decent president, he pretty much only got elected because he looked electable. And let me tell you this, you don't deserve to be mayor just 'cause you look like you could be on the front of a Just for Men box. So, yeah, don't he look like he's selling Gillette Fuses? Anyway, like I said, like, you don't deserve to be here just because of those factors alone. You know, you was talking all that tough talk to Trump about, "Oh, you gonna owe me $500,000." Trump ain't paid you nothing, 'cause you ain't tough. Y'all know another thing that's related to slavery. He's from Virginia, which is the state where the first slave ship came to this country, just so y'all know. And, speaking of slavery, this whole issue with crime stems back to the fact that white people have often had a hard time understanding the concept of abundance and the lack thereof and the effects of the lack thereof, and all of the crime that has existed in this country over this world, this whole world, all crime has been invented by white people. That's theft, selling drugs, rape, side note, white feminists, the real rape culture is the reason I'm light-skinned and I speak English, side note, just so y'all know. But, like I said, white people feel like they had to go through this because they didn't understand the concept of abundance, and y'all still don't understand the concept of abundance today. That's why y'all politicians keep fucking up the budget, and y'all ain't saving nobody lives, and y'all ain't helping no crime get lower, 'cause y'all don't get it. Before the bumblebee billboard saying that Minnesota is trash for black students, I already knew that, 'cause I actually taught at MPS, and I taught at Bloomington Private Schools as well. So, yeah, it ain't no soul here, especially since Prince died, so the black kids, they may not understand what's going on, but they feel that energy, and they react to that, so they beating ass and they taking money. And it's simple as that. Read a damn book.
Speaker 30, Samantha Priestensen, welcome. We'll ask 31, 32, 33 to get ready to speak. Thank you.
My name is Samantha Priestensen. I live in Ward 10, and I'm here today as the co-chair of the Racial Equity Committee here for the city, as well as for being the new executive program director at the Association for Black Economic Power, which is incorrectly listed on number 13 as Village Financial. That's our doing business as for a project that is up and coming. It would be great if we could even just list Association for Black Economic Power correctly, because that's who the city's money is coming to. I come here today, actually, I wasn't gonna come, but last week, there was a discrepancy around the he said, she said, and I wanted to come here to clear it up, to tell you what I said as it relates to the 2020 budget allocation that Mayor Frye had put in for the money towards the project. And so what I come here today to clarify is that I am not in support of money moving from us and moving to something that is not black. That is not helpful. It is not helpful to take money that was meant, this was not about us. This was bigger than us. This was about the black North Side ecosystem and creating infrastructure so that we can have the things in place for education around finances and that we could change the landscape. We are not in the business of dismantling systems. We are in the business, and I am in the role that I'm in now, to change systems and create new ones. That doesn't happen overnight, it's not a one-year process, there's gonna be bumps along the way, and business changes happen, organizational changes happen. For you to step away simply because we had a change in organizational leadership, which happens every day in white organizations. It happened Medtronic when I was there for six years, it happened in the military when I served and went overseas, it happened here at the city, happened when I left Council Member Cunningham's office. Organizational changes happen, and it shouldn't be any different when it's coming from a black organization versus a white one. So I'm here to address the fact that we need North Side ecosystem funding. It was intentional acts that led to the current day inequities and the lack of infrastructure in support for business, entrepreneurship, education, safety, and pathways to true ownership, homeownership or otherwise. So it's gonna take intentional funding and resources to change the course. You have got to change the conditions to change the conditions. And as we fund cultural districts and other cultural-specific necessities, it's critical to tell our narrative, and black is a culture. We're not talking about a race, that's a colonistic concept. And as a culture, we suffer from the worst disparities in this state, and more specifically in the Twin Cities, from our elders, our women, our children, our men, our refugees, our veterans, there is no sect of the black diaspora that has not been left behind, ignored, or erased. And speaking of erasures, change item 19, it was black women in the city council offices that fought to have their wage increased, and I started that. Council Member Cunningham, is that a lie? Why do I see council members on Twitter taking credit for the work of black women yet again and erasing us from our narrative? We were underpaid, and we were brought into our positions under where the white males came in, even though there were seven steps. So, let's talk about erasure. The erasure is unacceptable, and it's key to remember that we have to consistently are expected to do more with less. These community development projects are urgent, and talking about urgency, it's 400 years and counting, and it's not gonna take that long to correct for it, but it does mean that we need access to capital to be streamlined, it needs to be patient, and these projects from concept, engagement, planning, implementation, and execution are five- to seven-year commitments, depending on the size of the project. And resources to ensure success need to be readily available, and the ownership isn't just on government, but every single one of you have a role to play and are accountable for continuing to ignore the truths, and you're also accountable to work with us to prevent them from happening again and to intervene. These specific funds should remain in the budget as an open RFP specifically for black organizations, more specifically for North Side black organizations. I sat in the overfloor room and heard at least 20 names of organizations that are doing the work, that you call upon to do work, and that you underpay to do that work. Give that $500,000 to them if you're not gonna give it to us. But you're not gonna take that money and move it to something else. And the last thing I want to say, and I know I'm over time, but that's okay, is I don't want to hear excuses for other priorities. We're tired of flying on standby. We want priority boarding, and we want it now, and if there's no airport, there's no tarmac at the airport, well, then the plane can't leave the station. We need infrastructure funding, and we need it now, and I demand and I expect that you do the right thing and not call me the night before at the midnight hour where Council Member Ellison told me about how the money was gonna be moved. No preparation, no time for anything, and that's fine, but if you're not gonna give it to us, then it needs to go to the black community, because our community deserves to be funded now.
As we transition, I'll invite up Speaker 31, and then we'll have 32, 33, and 34 ready to go. Welcome.
That was incredible. I'm here to read my notes. My name is Madeline McWilliams. I go by Dylan, my pronouns are they/them. I live at 2726 Girardav South, number 204, I'm in Ward 10. I'm here to voice my support for Reclaim the Block. We need funding for real community safety solutions, not more cops. When friends and loved ones of mine have struggled with, lived through, and survived homelessness, addiction, and mental health crises, and when I've gone through mental health issues myself, it was, and gotten through them, it was because they or I reached out and were able to access loving and supportive community, mental health resources, and housing. None of my friends accessed these resources through interactions with police or through any sort of police institution. Cops don't provide housing for homeless youth, they criminalize poverty. Cops don't carry complex knowledge of mental health and trauma with them, they carry guns and white supremacist values. Funding the police is funding militarized, state-sanctioned violence against youth, poor folks, black and brown folks, queer and trans folks. Funding the police is funding, as someone already, multiple people have said, a bunch at a number of these hearings, funding the police is funding the institution that emerged after slavery specifically in order to maintain white supremacy. And thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Speaker 32, Mary, welcome.
My name is Mary McKelvey, and I'm at 2601 52nd Street West. I am a reserve teacher in the Minneapolis Public Schools, and I work with youth, and I am just speaking on behalf of all of you who are working on your budgets tonight, including the park board and the city council. There are some things that have been put in, in the park board, the park board proposal that were changed, and then some amendments that happened last week, and I sincerely hope that those amendments will really work for youth, and I appreciate the collaboration that the independent boards have, collaboration and cooperation. I think that youth are not seen, and they get tokenized, and I really hope that the level of sports and with programs that happen in the community centers, that especially at middle school level, I think that just when youth are starting to not become more independent, and they're only in school eight hours a day, if that, they are getting forgotten, and that is, that's the time that as a city, we need to catch them. That is also a prevention stage, and we need people to really be paid and appreciated for the relationships that they develop with youth to keep them as, keep them as the productive members of society that they already are. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker 33, welcome.
Hi, my name is Segura. I'm a resident of the central neighborhood in South Minneapolis, but I'm a spiritual North Sider, attended a meshed-onure in North Minneapolis my whole life, and I just want to echo a lot of the things that people have already said related to opposing the amounts allocated for the police. I think you should just get rid of it, like, all of it, and invest it directly to the communities that have expressed their concerns. People have ideas here, and they have the energy, they just need the resources. Why not eliminate that budget completely and get creative about those solutions? I've worked with youth for over 10 years, a variety of ages, just like people have said, our youth are traumatized, especially youth of color, and we need to heal and really need to really think about how we're gonna invest in them directly, and it starts really at a young age, that trauma from preschool all the way up. And so anyways, I wanted to recite a poem by a local poet, Dante Collins, just to kind of emphasize that you can be courageous, and this is about our lives and the lives of our youth, and why it is so scary. This is called "What the Dead Know by Heart" by Dante Collins. Lately, when asked, "How are you?", I respond with a name no longer living: Rakia, Jamar, Sandra. I am alive by luck at this point. I wonder often, if the gun that will unmake me is yet made. What white birth will bury me? How many bullets, like a flock of blue jays, will come to carry my black, to find its final bed? Which photo will be used to water down my blood? Today, I did not die, and there was no God or laws to thank. The bullet missed my head and landed in another. Today, I passed a mirror and did not see a body, instead, a suggestion, a debate, a blank Post-it note. They're looking back. I haven't enough room to both rage and weep. I go to cry, and each tear turns to steam. I say, "I matter," and a ghost white hand appears over my mouth. This is by Dante Collins. Dante Collins is a Twin Cities member, community member, and I think it's really important that you listen to the community that's telling you, "We don't want more police in our communities."
Thank you. Speaker 34, then we'll have 35, 36, and 37 get ready to speak. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lily Richard. I live at 2216 Garfield Avenue. I'm a student at the Humphrey School, and I just wanted to thank everyone else for sharing their stories tonight, and I wanted to add my voice to the support for Reclaim the Block's proposals to invest money in community safety and violence prevention and not fund more police. police in our community. Increased police presence benefits downtown business owners, it benefits gentrifiers, it does not benefit marginalized communities in the Twin Cities. And I think that it's clear that the people who are affected by violence in Minneapolis do not want more police, they want funding for violence prevention, they want investment in the black community, the Northside community, social support services, and things that will support and uplift the community, not uphold the system of white supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 35, welcome.
Hello, my name is Shona Kiki. I'm 23, I use they/them pronouns, and I grew up on the South Side in Corcoran, I went to South, graduated in 2014. Right now, I work at Suede Cafe. It's kind of a pillar of South Side as far as like co-ops, collectively owned businesses go. While it's white as fuck, it is the first time that I've felt seen in my gender in a workplace consistently, every day, all the time. People care there, and it's hard, but we're trying to hold it together. We pay ourselves minimum wage, split tips every week. And I live in Central Neighborhood on Portland and 34th. I just moved out of my mom's house in spring. My rent is $600, and I make about $800 a month. So needless to say, that's not enough, and I'm realizing every day more and more that $600 for rent for a kid like me is not sustainable, and I see every day Lake Street. Tell me who wants to live on Shilake? I don't know who wants to live in a big new apartment building on Shilake, but even there, big new apartments are being built, and I'm terrified. I feel panicked every time I see a nice ride or a Lime scooter. Like, our city's getting gentrified as fuck. And we need affordable housing for, to make homes for the people whose home this already is. We need affordable housing for the students that I work with who are graduating, who want to make their own homes. We do not need cops. I was just passing on West Bank the other day, and I saw that they had put up fences to block people from sleeping under the bridges. We do not need more fences, we do not need more cops, we need affordable housing. People don't steal, people don't kill, people don't commit crimes when they have a safe home and a place to sleep. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Speaker 36, Thomas. Then we'll have 37, 38, 39 ready.
Hello. I'm Thomas Russo. I've lived here my whole life. I'm a high school student, and I'm here with Young People's Action Coalition. I'm also in here in support of Reclaim the Block. And I would like to say that we understand what the MTD, MPD stands for, and it's not for black, brown, indigenous, or people of color. It's not for homeless people, it's not for drug users, and it's not for immigrants, and it's not for people in crisis, it is for profit. And as long as a city invests a dollar into police, that is absolutely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Speaker 37, welcome.
I ain't gonna even hold you, but I work with Shona. I work with Shona at the Rite Pack, and I have been stopped by police, I have been harassed, I have been told, or asked if I'm selling drugs, and just bringing more police is going to make me feel more harassed, more, you know, attacked, or whatever. I'm actually very nervous right now, I ain't gonna even hold you. But yeah, I do plan on going to college when I get older, graduating high school, you know, all that good stuff. And not being in the streets, not thugging, you know, like that bad stuff that y'all like to, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, how y'all like to display black people is not the way I am, like, I'm different. I grew up with my dad and my mom, and my dad have been through that, he don't want me going through that. I've been, you know, lectured about this, and I don't think more police should be coming and harassing and attacking me. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Speaker 38, Maurice. We'll ask 39, 40, and 41 to come up. We have about 10 more people signed in. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maurice, and I say like, like, why do we need more cops if like, is we like short cops or something? And like, which is the money can go to like tuitions for future like doctors and lawyers and stuff? And another reason is driver's ed classes, it costs a lot, like 280, and like, I feel like the money can go to the schools, so then like, y'all can have less accidents and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 39, Daphne, welcome.
Hello, good day, everyone, mayor. My name is Daphne Brown, I'm with Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar Clark, and I come here today to support the Reclaim the Block. I also come here today to support every last one of our organizations that came up here to speak with you and let you know about the work that they doing out there. We need y'all help, they need your help. That's why I'm here to support them and stuff. And y'all know that I demand, we at Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar Clark, we demand our police accountability council. We need it now, especially when I walked through this door and found out it's not 14 cops, it's 38? Really? Y'all haven't been hearing anything anyone has said to y'all? I don't even want no money. I don't want your money, but they need your money for the people that's out here. You guys are supposed to be helping us to heal, helping us to find a way so we can feel safe, and we not getting it from y'all. So what's the next step? To start literally telling you which ones got to go? We want to work with y'all. They want to work with y'all. All the work that they doing, everybody that's been coming up here, last week, it was over 100 speakers, speaking to y'all, asking y'all for help, for these funds right here. And then you stab everyone in the back and go from 14 to 38. That's not right. That is not right. So yeah, I'm here today to support Reclaim the Block, to support all of our organizations. I don't care if they wanted hand warmers, foot warmers, housing, mental, food, whatever. Give them what they need. And another thing, we will be speaking about our Minneapolis Police Accountability Council, because that's where we heading to. So y'all get ready, I've met a couple of y'all, I'll be coming to meet the rest of you, because we want it, and we want it now. And on another note, before I leave, I did turn in a sign up sheet for the coalition to you guys. If y'all could sign it, support us or show yourself, because we need to know who we working with and who working with us, all right, y'all? Yeah, and I'm Daphne Brown, Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar Clark.
Thank you. Speaker 40, Annalise, welcome.
Good evening, folks. My name is Annalise Brandell-Tennis. I live in the 9th Ward on 34th and Bloomington, and I work as an educator for both the Minneapolis Park Board and as a reserve teacher in Minneapolis Public Schools. So in youth public spaces, I'm here with Reclaim the Block today. I've been mediating 5th graders all week. It turns out that if you're trying to get any learning done, you got to meet them where their social needs are. And even if you know that they can resolve their own disputes, if you just say, hey, you got this, I trust you, and you walk away, they don't think you trust them. They don't think that you've got it, even when it seems clear that they know how to do it, even when you just watch them do it. Building trust means meeting them where they're at and like really walking it through. That was a hard lesson for me to learn right now, because I was like, youth empowerment, you got this, if I let you do it, you'll be okay. And it, it wasn't working, they were loud, they told me, they told me it wasn't working. So I'm here to say today, let's not do that as a city. All of us are here to tell you what's working and what's not working. We're doing the community organizing, we know what works and what doesn't, we know what we're good at, and we need you to say, I see you, I support you, and I'm going to stand with you, and I'm going to show my commitment with that money. So thank you for adding the Trans Equity staffer. Thank you for putting some money into the Office of Violence Prevention. I see that, and we're telling you that we need more. And I know that some of you know that, and so it would be so, so wonderful to see that in the budget and to validate our work, because folks are really holding it down to keep this city a wonderful, healthy place to live, and we need you to meet us. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 41, welcome.
Hi, my name is Sean. I reside at 2014 25th Avenue North. And today, I, I go to North Senior High School too, and I stand for Young People Action Coalition. As I, as a person who has lived over north for over seven years, say that why would you spend money, spend over 100 million on 14 cops when there is over 500,000 people that's homeless and struggling? Citizens that are homeless, struggling, I say that instead of spending your money on cops, spend money on your people. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 42. Speaker 42 here. Welcome. We'll ask 43, 44, 45 to come up and get ready.
Sorry. All right, I want to start out, first of all, my name's Hunter Williams, and I'm the co-coordinator for the Trans Equity Council. And first of all, I wanted to thank you for your support and your time for the, for the trans equity, the full-time position that we've been advocating for, I want to thank you for your support for that. But we do need to realize that the reality of the situation in, in the city as well as the world, and what does action mean to you all? I know I, we within our group, we work a lot, and I want to know what money means to you, what does work mean to you? I mean, you've, you support us, but you've given us such a small amount of the funding, and then a lot of the funding goes towards policing, and that's not fair, and that's not equality. And our workers are, are working 80 hours a week, they are exhausted, you know? Their mental health, their physical health impact, that has been impacting their work, and yet we're still getting such a small amount of funding, but such a large amount of funding is going to the policing community, to the policing, but the trans community is still not safe. But I do want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker 43, Bailey. We'll go to 44, and we'll come back if others come back. 44 is Margarita. 45 is Lance, welcome.
Hey, thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I'm Margarita Ortega. I am a community member and Little Earth of United Tribes. I always get nervous when I do this, and I don't know why, but I am here because I haven't seen as many Little Earth residents come here, and we don't always come here. And when we do come here, I want you all to have your ears open, because we have people that want to say, oh, Little Earth wants this, and Little Earth wants that. But let me get the record straight, the police do not help us. So let me get that, let me, let me straighten that for whoever was up here saying Little Earth wanted the police, because we do not need that. We need you to help fund us. We need you to help us do the work on the ground. We can't do this work without your help. We have constantly asked for support, but we don't get it, and we need your, we need you to come help us. We need you to start sitting there putting your money where the, where your mouth is. Instead of saying you help us and support us, put your money where your mouth is. Do it. Because what did you do to our people? Our people are now no longer able to be warm, our people are homeless out there. And what is the, what is the solution? Shuffle them around? Keep pushing them all over the place? What's the solution? We haven't seen a solution yet. The navigation center is gone. Where is my people sleeping tonight? I don't want my babies on that street, are you going to throw my babies on that street too? Are you going to put my babies in a friggin' goddamn cell because they're homeless? I was homeless at one time. I was in that street, I did sleep underneath that bridge that's fenced up. I slept there as a six-year-old child. So if you guys want to keep doing this, it's not going to work. This, it didn't work then, it's not going to work now. So quit policing your way out of a situation that you can address. Address the root causes, cops ain't going to do it. They're not going to let us stay in their houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 45, Lance. Speaker 45, welcome.
Name's Lance Lamont, I'm a Little Earth resident, and also I'd like to make a statement. I'm Native American, and speaking for our community, and as a Native American, we do not want more police. The Caucasian lady that was up here earlier stating that our community wants more police, it was very misleading and misrepresenting. But oppose the police bill and getting more police is something we're totally against. I want to talk about the Amendment Number 8. It's a recommended budget for the General Fund, the Health Department, clarifying that all funds appropriate to the City of, of City Office of Violence Prevention for Violence Prevention Program shall be available for use in all geographical areas in the city. I believe that's actually disenfranchising our most poorest and disadvantaged communities. We get statistics back from the 3rd Precincts from the police, from the Health Department stating why the Violence Office, the Office of Violence Prevention needs to be funded for these communities. We don't need our funding that needs to go to the North Minneapolis and South Minneapolis and Riverside to go to the suburbs, just because they're in our county. We need to make sure that this funding that's for, in the Office of Violence Prevention goes to these most communities that are most in need, and that it doesn't get outsourced. Also, it's the, another amendment, 18, it goes with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Special Revenue, Revenue Fund, and this is for the cultural corridors. Another community member spoke about this as well earlier. I find it really disheartening that the City of Minneapolis and all our council members can forget that you guys have a huge Native American population, that's culturally Pacific population. You guys have Efast, East African community, African American community, Latinx community, and Southeast Asian community, but for some reason, you guys forgot to add in your indigenous people. I state this because the Minnesota Department of Health, Native Americans are six times more likely to die of a drug overdose. Native Americans count for only 1.1% of the state of Minnesota's population. But we count, our count makes up to 10% of the opioid-related deaths, and we count for 16% of the homeless and unsheltered population. So I would urgently implore you guys to invest not just in one cultural, but all of our cultures. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Speaker 46, Luke. 47, and 48, and if you haven't signed in and want to speak, please see the clerk. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Luke Hampton. I live in Ward 7, and I came here last week with Reclaim the Block to ask that you amend the proposed budget to fund violence prevention instead of the addition of police officers. After you and I listened to countless heartfelt testimonies demonstrating the necessity of violence prevention in our communities, I figured you would have gotten the message, but it appears that you didn't. Or maybe you heard the message of one white man who came last week to voice his support of the additional police officers, because he claimed that he didn't feel safe walking down certain streets and neighborhoods. I was shocked at the lack of awareness of his privilege and his misplaced sense of what real safety is. More than that, I was shocked that he thought this was important enough to enter the conversation, that he thought his feeling of police-backed safety while he walked down public streets is more deserving of taxpayer dollars than the lives of those who testified about the dangers of policing in their communities and the lifesaving, the lifesaving impact of violence prevention. of violence prevention programs. The difference in the impact of, of, to lives on either side of this issue is astronomical, but somehow, the proposed budget doesn't reflect this at all, and I fail to see any explanation for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Alia, and I live in Ward Seven. I want to talk a little bit about our conceptions of safety, because I think that's kind of central to this issue right now. And for me, as a white person, I've always been taught to equate cops with safety, which I guess is kind of true for a lot of white people, especially says able-bodied, financially well-off ones. But the problem with that is that the imagined perpetrators in this situation, the people who the cops are supposedly protecting us from, are actually the most vulnerable and most marginalized in our communities, and I don't think that's safety. Relying on cops to solve our problems is a cop-out. It's boring, it's unimaginative, and most importantly, it's fatal. If you prioritize funding for the MPD, you're prioritizing white people's imagined fears over actual human lives. There are better ways to achieve safety, and they're already happening, as you've heard tonight from countless people. Communities will always know best how to care for their people. Increased criminalization and police violence is a depressing fallback when so many creative alternatives already exist. I hope you'll listen to our community members, who have long been the source of visionary paths toward justice. Police officers are external to our communities, and they represent violent forms of power. They will never make us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-eight. Philip. Welcome. This is the last speaker who's signed in, so I'll just check after this. If anyone else wants to speak, welcome.
Hi. My name's Philip Devaney. I live in Philip's neighborhood. I'm going to take it back to, like, elementary school education shit. When we're kids, what are the things we're taught are needs? Our needs are food, housing, shelter, water. You know what's conspicuously absent from those needs? Is fucking police. And I'm just, I'm just going to say this for you. Fuck you, dude. And I, I'm just, I, I do not like you, because you know what's going to end up happening with you when you get out of here? You're going to get some fucking consulting job. You're going to be fine.
Sir, please direct your comments to the council. Thank you.
So, when I say that that is conspicuously absent, I'll give you this. Safety is part of something that we all need. That's true. But are the cops breaking down the doors of the city council people who are raising our property taxes so that people can't afford to pay rent anymore? Are they coming to your door, and are they saying, "Jeez, why are you punishing these people? Are they making us safer when we can't afford to live in our own neighborhoods anymore?" Some people who've lived here their entire lives, unlike you. So, when, when we think about safety, how do the police provide safety, and who do they provide it for? When it comes down to it, the police provide safety for people who already have food, who already have enough shelter, who already have clean water. They do not protect the people who do not have food. They do not protect the people who do not have shelter. They do not protect the people who do not have clean water. So at the end of the day, the people we're making feel safe are the people who are already safe. And they're being protected from the people who are the most marginalized and who have had every fucking thing taken from them by this colonialist system that continues to marginalize and oppress people in this country. And if you say, "Oh, we got to put this off a little more, and we got to make a compromise because we need to fund all these things." Fund what? Fund more public parks that only people who can afford the increase in property taxes that result can actually enjoy? Good God! What the fuck is wrong with you? Thank you.
Okay. So that is the last of our registered speakers. I don't think anyone else has signed in. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Last call for the public hearing. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So I want to just explain what's going to happen for the rest of the night. We need to briefly recess the city council meeting so that the Board of Estimate and Taxation can meet. That will take about twenty minutes, and after that board meeting has adjourned, the city council will reconvene in this chamber to complete the remainder of our work on the 2020 budget. So at the same time that the city council meeting is reconvening after the BET meeting, the Park Board will be convening in Room 333, which is next door to the mayor's office, to complete its work on the Park District's 2020 budget. All of these meetings are open to the public, and the overflow space in 319 will be available for the rest of the evening. So with that, I will put our council meeting into recess, and thank you all so much for Welcome back, everyone. The time is eight thirty-five, and we have reconvened from the recess. The Board of Estimate and Taxation has completed their business. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. As I indicated earlier, the council will now proceed with the remainder of our agenda. At the same time, the Park Board is now meeting just down the hall in Room 333 to complete their work on their 2020 budget. Both of these meetings are open to the public, and overflow seating is available in Room 319 across the hallway. So we will now take up the series of resolutions listed as items on the printed agenda. I'll note for my colleagues that you have a little, small packet of three items before you. These are related to item number two, and that is when we will be taking up any amendments related to the operating budgets of the departments. So item number one is the proposed 2019 property tax levies payable in 2020. This is listed as item number one on the agenda, and I'll recognize Councilmember Palmasano to present the report of the Budget Committee.
Madam President, on behalf of the Budget Committee, I move adoption of a resolution approving the 2019 property tax levies to be paid in 2020.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved adoption of a resolution approving the 2019 property tax levy to be paid in 2020. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are ten ayes and three nays.
That motion passes and is adopted. The second agenda item is the proposed 2020 general appropriation resolution for the city's operating departments. I'll recognize Councilmember Palmasano, the Budget Committee Chair, to present that report.
Madam President, on behalf of the Budget Committee, I move adoption of a resolution establishing operating budgets for city departments under the city council and fixing the maximum amounts to be expended in fiscal year 2020.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved adoption of the 2020 general appropriation resolution establishing the operating budgets for the city departments. I'll note that that includes the amendments that happened at the last meeting on Friday. So if there's, and I'll see if there's any discussion on that motion, and this would be the time to bring forward additional amendments. I don't see folks jumping in queue, so perhaps I'll call on Councilmember Kano to bring the staff direction that we have in our packets.
Thank you, Madam President. I was indeed going to ask if budget amendments also included staff directions. So I would like to bring forward this staff direction that folks should have in front of them by now relating to the establishment of a pilot project that is based on wraparound services and harm reduction strategies to be created by the Restorative Justice and Adult Diversion City Work Group. So I'll read the staff direction, and then I'll briefly talk about it, and then stand for any questions. The staff direction says, "Directing the Finance and Property Services Department in collaboration with the city's attorney, with the city attorney's office and the Minneapolis Police Department to provide a funding source, a funding source recommendation for the implementation of the wraparound services and harm reduction pilot program proposed by the Restorative Justice and Adult Diversion City Work Group. The funding source recommendation shall fall in line with the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversions, or LEED for its acronym, National Support Bureau's pilot program recommendation of $250,000 to $500,000 for the successful launch of a Minneapolis-specific pilot program. The Finance and Property Services Department shall report its funding source recommendation to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee no later than April 1st, 2020, in order to launch the Minneapolis Pilot Program by June 1st, 2020." A lot of the language in here is in direct correlation to the previous staff direction we approved today at Committee of the Whole relating to the establishment of this work group to help us build on the, the maturation of the city's approach to addressing some of the challenges that we've been, I think, struggling with for a few years now. I'll just talk briefly about the history that I've seen unfold at the city relating to this issue. So when I was first elected to the city council, the way that we as a city tackled commercial sexual exploitation was by sending officers to do undercover stings at massage parlors. We quickly learned that was not the way to do the work. We then had the Police Department do a self-initiated partnership with nonprofit organizations to do street outreach, where things like toothbrushes, condoms, and toothpastes were handed out to women who were being exploited on the streets so they could have some dignity and, and access to other sanitary products as the oppression continued. And, and quickly, we learned that that was not enough. Later, we developed the Pre-Charge Diversion Program with the City Attorney's Office and MPD, and not enough people were electing to be a part of the program, because there was no sort of push for them to self-select to be a part of the Pre-Charge Diversion Initiative, either at the county level, which is known as the GIFT Court or Calendar, where at the time in 2015, there were no women involved in the program. And then later, at the city level, it was really hard to get women to be a part of the program too. We then started focusing on Johns and trying to target the perpetrators, and were successful in doing a few stings, but then quickly learned that it was unsustainable work because it requires voluntary female officers to pose as women who are being exploited. So a lot of resources went into that, and I think some of the folks who were apprehended through those strategies were, did not reoffend, but the department learned that it was unsustainable to keep doing that kind of work at that level. So here we are today, 2019, trying to explore yet another initiative, and we're hoping that this LEED-based program will give some results. The timeline is aggressive, and we know it's a heavy lift, but I believe that there's enough political will and support, both within the city enterprise and in the community, to tackle such an initiative. And I think now, more than ever, folks, at least from what I can tell with my colleagues, were looking for more metrics and outcomes and tangible results that we can stand by. So with that, I'll take any questions, and then would like to move my staff direction forward.
Councilmember Kano has moved this direction that she read aloud and that council members have in front of us. Are there, is there any discussion or comments on the staff direction? I don't see any. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Kano, for bringing this forward. I'm curious, you talked about commercial sexual exploitation. Is that going to be the primary focus of this wraparound services and harm reduction pilot, or is it going to be open to other low-level survival crimes?
It'll be open to more than just commercial sexual exploitation, and the staff direction in, from the Committee of the Whole this afternoon talked about that, and it, you know, the specific language was including but not limited to some of those efforts. So happy to have any of our council colleagues join that work group and that work and help guide, guide it and oversee it, and, and make sure that we have the proper delivery and outreach for cultural communities and, and specific groups.
Thank you. I think, thank you for that reminder.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Kano, I too appreciate you bringing forward this staff direction, and I'm curious, do you envision, and I, and I plan to participate in the work group to, to shape the direction of this work moving forward, but do you anticipate that this would be sort of a geographic location initially to, to sort of test the efficacy of the work?
That's an excellent question, and we're going to lean on our partners from LEED to figure that out. I would say that right now, based on what I know of the work from the past six years of looking at this issue, is that this seems to be an approach that follows the person versus the geography or the commercial corridor. So it's really about intensive case management that's proactive, that's culturally relevant, that's ongoing. As some of my colleagues might recall, the LEED program that was established in Seattle, which is a $5-million project that they're trying to grow to $11-million, is a lifelong project. And so once the person is enrolled in the initiative, they're a part of the program for the rest of their lives, as long as they're, they're interested in receiving the support and, and the, and the help. So I would say that this is probably going to focus on specific cases, cases of individuals who are likely to be benefited by the program and where we can really help those folks exit the situations that they find themselves in that is not necessarily constructive or productive for community harmony and health and healing. So more people-centered versus geography-centered.
Thank you. Thank you, and I look forward to participating in this work moving forward.
Thanks. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. So it looks like the amendment is, is, is teeing up a future budget amendment that would come forward next year, and it's asking our staff to come back with recommendations of $250,000 to $500,000 to, to launch the new program. And I'm just curious if there are any parameters on where do you think they'll be looking? Is this money that could come from the city attorney's office, or the Police Department, or both, or? It just makes me a little nervous because the sources are so vague, but of course, we're figuring this out now. My assumption is, maybe it is open that they could come from the Police Department, should there be, should that be a recommendation, but it's not necessarily stipulating that because we're having a look at that. So maybe the author could just clarify.
Yep. Absolutely. So Councilmember Gordon is correct that this is not an appropriation move right now. This is a direction to have our staff look at the books after 2019 closes, assess what is the healthiest initiative, where this, these sources could, could come from. And I did earlier circulate the toolkit that the LEED program folks shared with us, and in that narrative, where they recommend starting a pilot program within this monetary range, they talk about how that money can come from a lot of different sources. So this could potentially come from the city. We could ask our colleagues and collaborators at the county for a portion. We could certainly talk to foundations and other groups to provide some of the other portions of the resources. But this is being very intentional and planful about ensuring that us, as policymakers, are presented with recommendations from our staff about how we can resource this program. And at that time, which is April 1st or before, that is when we will be then asked to take a vote on where that exact appropriation would be coming from and for what amount. So this isn't a carte blanche movement, move. This is more about, like, let's have the staff do the research, let's have them figure out what makes the most sense, and then present it to us so that we can take that into consideration and then make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. Are there any other motions or amendments? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. If it's in order, there's a slight adjustment to the original amendment for number twelve, the money comes from, from the fire department, and just making that a flexible administrative choice of the chief. This is under advisement from the chief himself and does not in any way change the intent of the original underlying amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. I'll see if there's any discussion. I see Councilmember Schrader wants to comment. I do want to call my colleagues' attention to a note to the authors that came from Finance suggesting that the reduction would be best assigned to a particular task within the fire department, otherwise Finance and the fire department, but essentially Finance will be assigning that cut. So I'm happy to come back to this item if you want more time. I'll call on Councilmember Schrader now, but just wanted to note that in case the councilmembers hadn't seen that email from Finance that just came through. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Just also, I want to support the authors and support this amendment and also just kind of thank them for the work on this. I talked to the chief, and I get that we have to assign it to something. We had this discussion last time this came up, but after talking to the chief, this is kind of more preferred, just to be able to have some flexibility that hopefully in future budgets, we'd be able to fund that position.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I do just want to note that item number 12 is the appropriation for the trans equity coordinator position from the fire department. And I will work with my colleagues, Councilmember Reich and Cunningham, as well as the finance department, to determine exactly what source that will come from in the fire department.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Cunningham.
Just briefly, I just want to reiterate my gratitude to my colleagues for support on this position. This is the culmination of a lot of years of work related to trans equity work that was started under Council Vice President Jenkins, that I got to carry the torch on for a bit. We had somebody on contract. And then, once I got into office, I really understood deeply that if we want to have qualified trans folks doing work within the city, we have to be having folks in positions that are not on contract, but actually have a position in which they're getting some sort of benefits and protections in some way. And so I'm grateful to the former city coordinator, Nurya, for working with me to find money to make Trax position a part-time FTE, because I originally was another contract. And so being able to convert that over. So I'm really grateful that we actually are now making a permanent position to carry on the work and to build on it and have it grow far beyond what we can even think of now. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we stated in the previous meeting, and I think we'll make it clear, our intention originally was never to take any dollars, however specified, from the first responders or the equipment that supports their work. There would be some more administrative adjustment. So when we find this specific between now and Friday, it'll still be in that spirit as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll just note that while this is a relatively small item, I think the principle underlying the comment from Finance was that it doesn't work for the council to make essentially a base cut to a department's budget because the way we budget does allocate funds within the department for specific purposes. So I appreciate that the authors of this will be in communication with Finance and the fire department, the fire chief, to add more specificity to this. But that was the reason behind the question and I think the principle that we want to avoid in the future. We want to stick to the principle of cutting specific programs in departments and not just cutting departments by a certain amount of money without specifying what we would be stopping or starting. So thanks for that. And I don't want to take away from the excitement of adding this position. I know that we had a lot of people coming to speak about this, and the authors have worked together to find the best funding source after a lot of discussion. So thank you all for your leadership in that. Council Vice President.
Boy, at the risk of, I mean, I'm just learning that the source that we had identified is not appropriate. So I thought we had done that work ahead of time and...
Mr. Arum.
Vice President, I think what I'm hearing is that the authors would like to continue to have conversation with the fire department and finance staff and perhaps bring a staff direction to Friday's final council meeting of the year with clarity on where this reduction should come from. I think that would work perfectly from a staff standpoint.
Thank you. I wasn't listening because I was talking to Councilmember Cunningham. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? Mr. Clerk. Sorry, it looked like you want to talk. All right. So my understanding is that everyone will be talking between now and Friday, working to identify a specific source within the fire department to clear up the discussion that we just had. Great. Which means there will be a small amendment to the budget on Friday, potentially. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Seeing none, Councilmember Gordon.
So Friday will give us an opportunity to again amend the budget, right? I don't know. I'm not sure why, I mean, I'm not sure why we can't figure it out now, but that's going to make it feel pretty intriguing to some of us if we can still keep fixing the budget on Friday. So, but I understand, we looked at this amendment now. I don't quite understand why we can't just pass it as was presented by the council members. It seems like we've passed things as vague in the past. But right now, we are going to, is somebody going to move to table it? What are we just going to do, leave it hanging? Did you pull it off?
The motion is to approve this item. There's been some discussion about clarifying the source. If that clarification requires an amendment to the budget, we do still have an opportunity to do that on Friday. Or if it's agreed that it can be an administrative change that communicated to the council, I think Finance is comfortable with that. It looks like the clerk is not comfortable with that, which is why I was working to recognize him if he wants to say something, but if not, that's okay, too.
Madam President, what I would understand your direction is that we're passing the budget tonight. The series of resolutions that are coming forward, this amendment is being included in that budget tonight. The source of funding, however, for this one item would, for technical purposes, possibly need to come forward on Friday, and we would be amending the general appropriation resolution only. That is one small component of the entire budget. So it's not opening the budget to new opportunities for amendment. It's clarifying the technicality of funding source on this one item that the council would be including in the entire packet of resolutions that constitute the budget, if I understand what you're saying.
Yes. And just to clarify, I think that there is a source identified, which is from the fire department. There's a question about the level of specificity in that item.
So that's good clarity. And if I may, so if we do nothing to do with this on Friday, there'll still be the money, the position will still be there, we've still approved funding for it. And just as a side note, we could also amend it in January. And as you all know, we make budget amendments regularly throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader. Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender. There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. So I'll see if there are any other amendments or items from councilmembers. Councilmember Cunningham and I are working on a staff direction together. It was just passed out, but is lacking some of the language that we had intended to be in there. So we are working on getting that item in better copy. I am multitask. Okay. Great. So I will pause and see if there is any other amendments coming besides that one. I don't see any, so I can recognize Councilmember Cunningham. And while you're speaking, perhaps I can go ahead. And now I see Councilmember Worsami in queue.
I just wanted to vote aye on the previous.
Assuming there's no objection from any council member.
Is there any objection to Councilmember Worsami being noted as an aye on the last vote, seeing none? That is, okay. So I'll recognize Councilmember Cunningham, working to get the new item passed out. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The updated version is now being passed out, so I'll go ahead and read through it. And Council President Bender, please feel to jump in at any time when we're discussing it. So the Minneapolis Police Department is directed to convene a working group charged with developing outcomes, metrics, and best emergent practices for Vision Zero-based traffic enforcement with MPD in alignment with the Vision Zero Plan and the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan goals. The working group should include staff from MPD, Public Works, the Office of Police Conduct Review, the Division of Race and Equity, and the Vision Zero Task Force, as well as community representatives from relevant advisory bodies, including the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Bicycle Advisory Committee, 911 Work Group, and the Race Equity Community Advisory Committee. Advisory committees can choose to have an ongoing representative on the work group if they so choose and receive regular updates from the work group on progress. The work group should draw upon previous community engagement related to Vision Zero, the Race Equity Action Plan, Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Action Plan, and related efforts, and include specific and additional public engagement as needed. The Minneapolis Police Department is directed to identify one lead staff person to be the main coordinator and contact person for traffic enforcement and Vision Zero work, to be in a position to, one, establish and implement data gathering and tracking mechanisms in alignment with Vision Zero, commitment of eliminating deaths and serious injuries from car traffic crashes and goals, particularly the five behaviors identified in Vision Zero Action 4.1. Data should be racially disaggregated where appropriate. Two, make recommendations related to setting, achieving, and measuring race equity goals in traffic enforcement by compiling best and emergent practices and increasing traffic safety. And three, making recommendations to policymakers and the public about future investments in traffic enforcement work, including potential staffing needs and structure. This work group shall be co-chaired by a city council member and the MPD lead coordinator. The work group should meet at least monthly in 2020 to produce recommendations. Updates from the work group should be incorporated into planned Vision Zero updates to the Transportation and Public Works Committee and shall go before the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee to specifically report by quarter three of 2020. One, a baseline summary of data of the top five behaviors identified in the Vision Zero Plan, Action 4.1, and plans for tracking data over time, recommendations for targeted enforcement of behaviors with an emphasis on achieving the goals of the Vision Zero Plan while balancing race equity, and recommendations on staffing needs to achieve these goals. So that's a lot there, but that's because this is a really big topic and it's complicated, so we want to try to be as thorough as possible. I'm grateful to Council President Bender for working on this with me. There has been a clear interest in the Traffic Enforcement Division being reestablished within the police department. And as that is happening, it is important for us to be as intentional as possible. Enforcement is one of the pillars of the Vision Zero Action Plan. And also, we want to be as intentional as possible to ensure that the work does not exasperate racial disparities that we already see in traffic enforcement. And so this is meant to create parameters for this reestablishment to happen within a way that is centering racial equity and best practices. Because if we just let things unfold as the way business has already been done, we will continue to get the results that we see, and we will not see improved safety on our streets. So this is meant to be a baseline that we are setting as a council, as elected officials, that this is how we would like to see this work carried out and really challenge the work as it's currently being carried out. So there is a lot here. So if folks have questions on it, I'm happy to take answers. I think a big part of it that just should be noted is that data will be tracked and it will be racially disaggregated, so we'll be able to keep a close eye on how things are unfolding as this work rolls out. Madam President, I turn it over to you if you want to add anything.
Thank you, Councilmember. I see a lot of councilmembers in queue to comment or ask questions. I'll just add a few comments to Councilmember Cunningham's words. First of all, this really originated after the proposed budget included the establishment of a new traffic enforcement division within MPD, which originally had a $500,000 cost associated with it. After the amendments that came on Friday, the budget is no longer structured that way. The money has shifted now to a recruit class. But actually, that was the structure that was originally in the budget to begin with. The proposed traffic enforcement unit was going to be officers shifting to that purpose and then backfilled with recruits. So I'll say I've been vocally concerned about the reestablishment of a new traffic enforcement unit in MPD. It's not how I would have prioritized a half million dollars to spend on traffic safety. But there is a lot of interest in enforcement, and I want to make sure that if and when we do expand traffic enforcement in our city, that it is done with a very clear focus on the Vision Zero commitment that we've made, a very clear focus on the behaviors that lead to crashes, and that we acknowledge that we already have huge racial disparities in moving violations and traffic stops. The police department says they don't do traffic enforcement, but they give, tens of thousands of people are pulled over for traffic violations in our city. So if we are going to do a good job of meeting our goals of using enforcement as one way to keep people safer in our streets, I really feel strongly that this foundational work is important. And I really want to thank Councilmember Cunningham for all of the work that went into this. We've talked with folks in the police department, with Public Works Department, with our race equity staff, with people in the Office of Police Conduct Review, all of whom I think will be critical to making sure that if we do expand enforcement activities, that it is done with those two priorities in mind, keeping people safer in our streets and not exacerbating racial disparities that we see today in traffic stops. So I'll stop there for now, and I see a number of councilmembers in queue, starting with Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President Bender. And I want to thank you and Councilmember Cunningham for bringing this forward. It is very important for many reasons. One is that it brings race equity into the conversation in a way that is critical and that the community has raised with us as a deep concern about the current traffic enforcement that we are doing, and that we do not yet have answers about how future traffic enforcement intends to not replicate the racial disparities in current traffic enforcement. And we need those answers before we proceed with this, and so this conversation is critical. It is also really important for another reason, which is that MPD, in addition to being the ones who could potentially write tickets and enforce and pull people over, which is really where the conversation has been centered, are also the first responders at accidents. And that is something that doesn't get talked about as much, but I want to talk about why it's important a little bit. And I hope you'll bear with me for just a second, because I'm pretty upset about this. It's fairly fresh. There was an accident about a month ago in Ward 3 at Second Street North and Fifth Street. And many of my constituents contacted me, and they were very upset about it. And they said, there was a serious accident. What are you going to do about it? What are we going to do about it? You keep talking about Vision Zero. What's going to happen? And I talked to Public Works, and Public Works said, we looked at it, we looked at the report. It doesn't look like any of the solutions that they're proposing would have fixed the problem. And so I relayed that back, and my constituents looked at me like, gosh, the city's really not responding to this in an appropriate way. And there was a disconnect, and you could feel the disconnect. And I asked Public Works again, and they said, no, I think this is really something where a driver made a mistake, but it wasn't, you know, they had a stop sign, so what else are we going to do? And there were only minor injuries. Today in the Star Tribune, we learned who received the allegedly minor injuries. We learned that because the victim passed away from those injuries. It was reported to us in a way that did not take away... It was reported to us in a way that did not take it seriously. It was reported to us in a way that did not allow Public Works to enact Vision Zero principles and work to redesign that street. It was reported to us in a way that frankly just did not take as seriously as it should have, a collision between a car and a pedestrian. The woman's name was Yvonne Polka. She was a scholar. She was a children's author and illustrator. She was a grandmother, and she passed away from injuries at an intersection that we failed to make safe enough. And not only did we fail to make it safe enough, but we failed to even report accurately what had happened so that we could make it safer in the future. And so when we talk about data-driven decision-making for Vision Zero, it is absolutely critical that our first responders, who are writing the reports on these incidents, have the training that they need, and have the support that they need, and have the supervision that they need, to actually report these incidents in a way that we can act on them. We are moving as fast as we can. I think we need to move faster to make our streets safer, but we cannot do it without good information, and having Public Works and MPD in conversation with each other in this very intentional way, and having someone at MPD who is accountable for coordinating this activity, and who is accountable for making sure that it is not okay to just have three traffic enforcement. I'm not going to be satisfied if they come back with that. They have to talk about how they're going to train and instill a culture of respecting pedestrian safety as a part of the training for every officer who is going to be assigned to first response. And I am grateful that we're working on this. I'm grateful that the staff direction is coming forward. My thoughts are with Ms. Polka's family, and the people who are fans of her work, and her friends who she was visiting in the North Loop, and I hope that we can do better by everybody as a result of the very intentional and thoughtful work that you're doing to put some structure to the notion of traffic enforcement and traffic safety.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to you and Councilmember Cunningham for your work on this. I think this is really important to have this framework around restoring a dedicated traffic enforcement unit within MPD. I do have perhaps a question, kind of a comment on this. I note that I see, specifically to report back by quarter three, I was wondering just kind of if the authors are willing to share why it would be quarter three, and why, I know it's a lot of work, and so I'm guessing that that's it, but just to speak to that maybe on why you wouldn't see that potentially sooner in the year.
I'll be brief and then defer to Councilwoman Cunningham. I think we, it is a lot of work with a lot of layers, so we wanted to make sure that we at least had a recommendation before we were considering next year's budget, especially if there's a budget recommendation or ask. I think this doesn't preclude the chair of the Public Safety Committee or the Transportation and Public Works Committee to request additional updates or progress reports in the interim, but that was the thinking, and I'll see if Councilwoman Cunningham wants to add.
Yes, I'll just add saying that when we are doing cross-departmental efforts like this, from my experience, we, it takes time to be intentional about it, and that everybody is equally accountable in the process, so that one department isn't carrying it forward without equal accountability. So, want to be able to make sure we have enough time. The idea is that if the chief is going to reestablish the Traffic Enforcement Division with the recruits that are graduating in December, that we have the recommendations in place before then. And, but it's about being intentional, but as Council President Bender said, if TPW or PSEM, if either of those committees are interested, quarter one can come back with what the plan is, you know, how it's going to be rolled out and things like that. There's definitely opportunities, but I want to make sure that we have enough time. One of the symptoms of white supremacy is urgency in a way that creates lesser quality work, and for the sake of getting things done faster, and so I just want to be intentional about not baking that into this, so, but there is space for updates along the way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll just note a couple other thoughts, and I don't see any need for amendment on this, but just wanted to put it out there on the record as this work group is looking at doing this work. I think it's implied in this, and I, forgive me if I missed it, but I would hope that the reports and the data is actually posted publicly online. It certainly says in here that there'll be a report to the committee. Just hope we can have some sort of dashboard so that the public is able to see in near real time or regular updates on the results. And then, the other piece is, we know disparities exist today with current traffic enforcement or stops that are happening. I would hope that the aggregated data is able to distinguish between the dedicated traffic enforcement unit and other stops that are happening within our city, to be able to, otherwise, I don't think we're going to really understand both our progress on changing disparities within existing MPD work, and also how effective this unit is being in their work in terms of tackling racial inequities. So, I hope the work group can make that a priority in their recommendations. Again, I really appreciate the work on this. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison is in queue. I'll just note, as part of a response to Councilmember Johnson's question, the top five behaviors that have been identified to most lead to crashes are not currently being tracked, so part of the work is even just setting up a system to track the behaviors that this work hopes to address, so, part of the timeline issue as well. Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to voice that I'll be supporting the staff direction, because I really respect the amount of effort and work that went into the staff direction. It's dense, and I don't think that's a bad thing, but I just want to point out that the reason it has to be this dense and this intentional in its language is because we know that if we just up and started a traffic unit now, the status quo would exacerbate disparities, that it would be black and brown folks being pulled over, and that, and that the traffic, and that that's how traffic enforcement has played out in the past, and that's how traffic enforcement would play out if we didn't approach it with this level of intention. And I think that the fact that we have to provide this level of intention is a little bit frustrating and does weaken my confidence in MPD's ability to get this right. So, I look forward to seeing the work that comes out of this staff direction. Can't speak to whether I would be supporting the establishment of a new traffic unit in the future, but, but at minimum, we need this kind of analysis if we're going to consider it, so, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
This is all, it's very interesting. I'm, I think convening a work group, it seems like it's a lot of work. I think this is reasonable, and I'll probably support it. The opening line is very interesting to me, because I think we're acting like we can do something that we can't, and hopefully, the Police Department will respond as if we have the authority to do it, but we actually can't direct the police chief to do anything. And quite honestly, if he wanted to, and the mayor, wanted to create six traffic units tomorrow with the force that we've funded for them, they could. In fact, they do traffic enforcement regularly and all the time. So hopefully, this work group can get into some nuts and bolts and can help inform that a little bit. I'm worried that by voting for this, people might interpret that we support the creation of a dedicated traffic enforcement unit, and we might support it sooner rather than later, and I don't, my vote in supporting this isn't saying I think that makes any sense necessarily or not, and also recognizing that the way our city is structured, that's not the council's decision or prerogative to decide. So, in fact, I thought it was strange that it was in the budget, we would budget a traffic enforcement unit, knowing that once we approved the money, it would be up to the chief to spend that where they wanted. So, I don't have necessarily a lot of confidence, and I want to point out that in the Vision Zero Plan, there's no recommendation that we create a traffic unit. They talk about enforcement and concerns about behaviors, and then they talk about legislative changes that might improve the situation, and they're not necessarily called out in this. I understand this work group is really important. I really like that all the players that are at the table to be involved in it, and I like that we're hammering hard on the equity issue, and I think that if that could inform all traffic enforcement efforts of the department, that will, and maybe responses to traffic reports, or whatever, I think that will be helpful, and it could help that move forward. It doesn't necessarily mean that I think, "Oh, boy, let's get some cadets graduated so we can create these traffic units that will pick on people." So, that's, just wanted to say that, and hopefully, the chiefs agreed to convene the group with the department that the mayor oversees.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or discussion? Councilwoman Gordon, the chief did agree to this. However, I share many of the concerns voiced by you and Councilwoman Ellison, and agree that the level of specificity here is a bit unusual in what we give to staff, but I think is necessary for us to have any confidence that this kind of work would be done balancing all of these particular priorities. Anything else? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that staff direction is adopted. I'll see if there are any other amendments to be offered for item two, which is the general appropriations item on the agenda. I don't see anyone in queue, so I'll pause and see if there's any comments or discussion that councilmembers want to make on this item. I could note that comments would be welcome now, or there's time at the very end. So we're, just for my colleagues' sake, as a reminder, we're voting on each of these items that are listed under item one separately, so that is the final vote on each of these items. We can pause at the end to offer comments after we've gone through all of these items, so I'll see if there's any comments now. Councilmember Gordon.
So we're basically approving the department's operational budgets right now, so this seems to be a pretty significant vote, and most of our amendments dealt with this part of the budget, and this is the really big part of the budget. And I'm trying to get my head around it. I have a lot of mixed feelings about it. I think I talked about at the last public hearing that the compromise with the Police Department felt like a compromise that I was left out of, and it wasn't good enough, and it wasn't a compromise with me. As you recall, I reminded us all that we agreed last year to add $700,000 to the Police Department, and then the mayor came back wanting to add over eight million, and then we were able to, in that compromise move, and it's actually closer to eight point, oh, here's my, four million, eight point five million that the mayor added, and then we took 250,000 out of that, and I thought that we should be able to take a lot more, especially when we heard from people about the other concerns and the issues out there, including domestic violence and opioid crisis and all of those things. So, I think I also alluded to the fact that I might be working on finding another compromise. I wasn't very successful in the days. I did some digging into the police budget, though, and asking particularly to look at funds that weren't associated with the cadet class, and funds that even weren't associated with any personnel, and there's actually quite a bit. I looked at the budget for the Professional Standards Program, and I said, "I just want to, just look at contracted services only that goes to the Professional Standards Budget Program." And there's 4.2 million dollars that just go into contracts to support the Professional Standards Program, and there's 908,000 that goes to rent, 478,000 that goes for professional services, now, the one, over one million that goes for IT services. So clearly, there's money in that budget. It reminded me of some of the days when you hear about those right-wing conservatives, and they talk about cutting the fat, and we have to be a little more lean, and it seems to me if we're desperate for funds for police, we should be able to look through the budget, and we should find areas, or if we're actually desperate for funding for things like affordable housing or response to the opioid crisis and other things that are going on in our city, we should be looking harder to find that money. I know there's some amendments that I brought forward that got passed, and I feel good about it. I think we did make some progress, getting some funds to violence prevention. I think what I want to do, and why I'm belaboring it a little bit here, is I want to make sure that my concerns are noted on the record. I want to make sure that we are invested in looking at that 911 study and those recommendations, that we're invested in looking at the recommendations of the Opioid Task Force. One of the budget amendments that I'm most supportive of is actually doing a staffing study of the Minneapolis Police Department. How strange it was this year when we heard from the police chief, as the budget process was ramping up, that he thought he needed 400 more officers, and there's 888 now, so that's like a significant increase. And it just seemed like somehow that the whole narrative was being driven so that then when we came in with, "Let's add 14 more officers later," it just seemed like hardly anything. But it still was, is a more significant increase in the budget than almost anywhere else. And this is at a time when people are actually asking us to do more and make smarter and wiser investments. I actually think, and I think I mentioned this a little bit at the last hearing that we had, that we're at a tipping point, and people are finally getting it. I even hear from the police when I'm at community meetings, "We can't arrest ourselves out of this problem." We don't hear about the broken windows, you know, theories anymore, because people realize that was wrong and it didn't work. It led to mass incarceration. We had a mentality when I was first elected about 12 years ago, that what the police were supposed to do is go out and find the bad guys, bring the bad guys in, and lock the bad guys up. And that's been the mentality probably for 150 years of the Police Department, and people are slowly understanding, they're just trying to identify bad guys, and actually, nobody's a bad guy. People are good. The thing that we can do is we can look at the conditions that people live in. We can look at the environment that they're in. We can look at what is available there so that their best selves can flourish and can grow and can, and can happen, and so that we can prevent the problems, the health issues that might impact them from happening, and heal them, and those things. That's what we should be doing up here, and that's what people are asking us to do. Please invest in the community. Please invest so that we can actually prevent these problems. Don't invest in helping us sort people out into good and bad, because that never works, and everybody makes mistakes up and down all the time, and then we end up relying on our biases, our prejudice. We end up looking at who's got the power and the money, and we have to protect them and help them, and who doesn't. You know what's happened to us over the years with our historical track record of how well we do that. We end up writing the laws tailor-made so that we can end up picking on people that we think somehow need to be, I guess, picked on or taken care of. So we have to do better than this, and it's really easy when there's an uptick in crime, when there's livability concerns going on. It's really easy for a lot of us to say, "We need more police. We need to take care of this problem. Oh, these people are creating problems for me. Let's not really solve the problem, and let's not really help. Let's get rid of these people instead." And I think we have to stop moving in that direction, and we have to stop doing that. And I think we also know we have to reform the culture of the Police Department, and it's so hard for people to have confidence that that's happening when we see things in social media or on the national news, what our Police Department is doing. I will tell you firsthand, I know that we have wonderful police officers, and they save lives regularly, and they help vulnerable people get help. But we need to rebuild the confidence, and we need to do a lot of work on our Police Department, and maybe even changing the way that they operate and do business in that culture too, before we come back asking for other budget increases like this. So, seeing that my time is up, with those serious objections noted in the record, I'm still willing to support the budget that my colleagues worked out, but I really hope between now and next year, we can line up a better, a better package, and if at the last minute we do want to make some compromises, let's try to talk to everybody and work everybody's, try to meet everybody's needs and move a little further, even if, even the needs of the Minority Party Caucus.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Any further discussion? I don't see anyone in queue. I don't see anyone in queue. I will make some comments then as well. I, along with Councilmembers Gordon and Ellison, brought an amendment to the meeting on Friday that failed. And so, while I wish I could respond to my constituents who asked me to do more today, I don't think there would be much value in bringing another amendment after the result of Friday's meeting. So, I wanted to explain that that was why, like Councilmember Gordon, I don't think we found any change from that discussion that we had on Friday, which was, I think, good debate and a healthy discussion. I do want to note that I think this is a very good budget. We've moved on from debating some fundamental things that even a few years ago weren't accepted as mainstream or, I guess, mainstream. We funded wage theft, not only investing, wage theft enforcement, not only investing in full-time staff in our labor enforcement group, but also funding community organizations who are on the ground organizing workers. And just a few years ago, that, that idea was a subject of debate. The idea that we would fund a community organization who's organizing workers to help us enforce labor laws was subject of debate, and we've moved on from that. We've gotten to a place where we're investing a little bit in labor enforcement standards, not nearly enough. But I'm glad that this budget includes funding specifically for wage theft enforcement in a city that is growing to make sure that our workers are paid what they are owed. I'm glad that our, my colleagues brought an amendment to invest more in clean energy. The number-one thing I hear from my constituents is a concern about climate change. You know, we hear a lot about the day-to-day issues facing folks in the community, but when we ask people what their highest priority is, we often hear about climate change and a real fear, and I think especially folks who are younger than me. There's an age difference in that. Folks are, when we had the public hearings last year about our comprehensive plan, I think everyone under the age of 40 mentioned climate change as a priority. And so, I think we have done our work to invest in that. We have much more to do to reduce cities' greenhouse gas emissions, to meet our goals, and that will continue to take all of our work together. I, I still don't think this budget goes far enough in investing in a balanced approach to public safety. I think we are investing too much money in incarceration-based policing and not enough money in community-based safety. I think that the police department needs a complete overhaul of its budget. I think we need to look very carefully and critically about the ways in which the budget structure has created a separate government entity in the police department that operates independently from the rest of our city enterprise, with its own communications department, its own HR department, its own IT, things that are often handled centrally for every other department in the city. The MPD has its own separate entities, and particularly in communications, I've been disappointed again and again to hear the narrative coming out of the department, not acknowledging the context that we are in, saying things like, you know, talking about crime rates without acknowledging that last year's crime was at a 30-year low when talking about this year, not putting things into context, and frankly, not taking credit for the good work that the department is part of bringing about in our community. I actually don't even understand why that would be in the benefit of the department. So, I think we need to reintegrate the police department back into the city of Minneapolis, into the city enterprise. That's happening in a lot of ways in these new innovative work in violence prevention. It's happening in other places, but fundamentally, that department needs to be part of the city enterprise, and I think there's a lot of work to do there. I think there's probably a lot of budget efficiencies to be gained from that. We have HR departments that help support the hiring of all kinds of staff, engineers, folks who make sure our bridges are safe. I think we can reintegrate the police department into our city. So, I think, I know a lot of folks are disappointed that this budget didn't go as far as you would like. I want to make sure that everyone who came to speak, we've heard from hundreds of people in our public hearings, I've heard from many of my constituents, and I know my colleagues have too, your voices really did matter in this budget. You made it better. You've put pressure on this body to do better next year. I'm committed to that, and I know many of my colleagues are. We know you'll be back to hold us accountable to any promises that were made, and there were a lot of promises. And that brings me to my final point. One of my biggest concerns about make, not making decisions about trade-offs now is that we've added so much money to our public safety budget that it's squeezing the funds that are available for other priorities, like climate change, like labor standards enforcement, like the opioid crisis. And so, you know, in some ways, we've really pushed this discussion to future years, and I think the time is going to come where we're going to have to make some more trade-offs. Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
I'll keep it short. I just wanted to echo the sentiment that you and Councilmember Gordon have, you know, yet we brought forward an amendment to go a little bit deeper in investing in non-police-based strategies, and, and I think that it was the will of the body did not go that direction this year. But I think someone from Reclaim had made a statement saying that, you know, can councilmembers say that they're, make a commitment to, you know, deepening this, their commitment to, to non-policing violence prevention strategies? And I just want to say that, like, not specifically to Reclaim the Block, but to the whole city, that, yeah, I do want to make that commitment and say that I think that our city deserves that. And, and I'm sad that we couldn't go that direction this year, but I know that a lot of my colleagues also value that and, and say that, you know, when it comes to violence prevention, I know that violence prevention has sort of had this, this maybe disproportionate, disproportionate part of the conversation, both for and against. And even though we've had really great people doing great work for a number of years here at the city, we've only really been funding violence prevention, non-police-based violence prevention for about a year. This is maybe our second year. A lot of that because of the leadership of Councilmember Cunningham. And so, and so I think that we have, we have a lot of work to catch up. We have a lot of work to do to really invest and, and put our money where our mouth is when it comes to not just pouring more money into the, to the police department. I'm excited to work with my colleagues to, again, take a look at, as the council president referred to, this sort of shadow government that the, the MPD has sort of developed. They have their own data records. They have their own IT and, and, and other departments that, that aren't replicated throughout the city. Does the part, what does the department need that? Does that add to transparency? And, and if not, then how can we have a hard conversation and put things where they need to go and make it so the department is a little bit more focused on what it's supposed to be doing? You know, with that, I will be supporting the budget. I think that there's a lot of great things that we were able to do in terms of economic inclusion, which, you know, was a highlight for the mayor in his State of the City address. And I think that we were able to create some really cool things this year that I really believe will go and support small businesses and folks looking to, folks looking to be assets in their neighborhood, who already are assets in their neighborhood, but don't, but don't necessarily get that level of support from the city. I think we can, we can use a few tools to give that support. So, just wanted to have that on the record, and, and, yeah, it's been a good year.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I want, I mean, I'm going to support the budget, but I don't want to talk about the public safety issue. I think a lot of my colleagues talked about the public safety issue and reforming the police, and if 14 police officers enough, if less is enough, if we should get rid of the whole police, that discussion is, you know, has been going on, and it's a very fruitful discussion. However, I want to talk about economic inclusion and the real, you know, 800-pound gorilla in the room that people are not really discussing, which is, there is a community, there are communities in the city that are poor. There are communities in the city, when you talk about public housing, you're talking about them. When you talk about affordable housing, you're talking about them. When you're talking about lack of skills, you're talking about them. And we don't, we don't, we're not hearing much of that in this discussion, in this budget. And I've been in the city of Minneapolis for six years, and it's really, really hard, and it's really, really difficult when you are seen or your community is seen as not being taxpayers or not paying taxes in the city, and therefore, not worthy of city services and not worthy of having money put into their community. For example, the Star Tribune calls a public market, the Africa Village Public Market, a controversial issue, right? But I want to remind them, and I want to remind everybody here, that our very existence in the city is controversial. The fact that you have an immigrant population in the city who are black, who are Muslim, who are marginalized is controversial. And therefore, when we try to create a public market for this community, there's a pushback. When we try to create a cooperative, the most democratic system that you could have in community ownership, it's controversial. When we put, when we try to put 50,000, $50,000 out of a 1.6 billion budget to create a cooperative for the poorest community in the city, for them to have ownership of their market, it's controversial. And I think that's shameful. That's shameful. And I know all these people talking about, you know, reclaim the block, or talking about North Minneapolis, or talking about, you know, you know, why should, why should we put money in the Somali community? Why should we put money in the East African community? It's frustrating, because it's frustrating, because people give money to developers. People give money to downtown. People give money, and that's never questioned. But one little bit of money goes to this East African community. It's questioned as if we are taking more than we deserve. We are taking more than we should. So, that's why this whole year has been very interesting, you know, with the Africa Village market development, that a so-called progressive city will push back against the creation of the first community-owned African entity in the city of Minneapolis, where you have, you have, in every single ward, you have Somali community members. In every single ward, you have Somali homeowners. In every single ward, in every single school district, you have Somali members. And yet, we should be burdened that Caramel is owned by a slumlord, that 24 is owned by a slumlord, and the city of Minneapolis, for a decade, watch that slumlord take advantage of our community. And once we try to create our own little space, our own little Chinatown, our own little area, it is controversial. So, that's why I'm going to support this budget, but people need to wake up. You know, you're not going to solve the public safety issue if you have a community that's poor, if you have African-American kids who are marginalized. You're not going to solve, solve this if you have Hispanic kids marginalized. You're not going to solve this if we cannot work in the Mayo Clinic, and we cannot work in downtown, or we cannot afford this city. So, this is about economic exclusion. This is about economic exclusion. These children need to be trained. These, these young men, young women need to have skills to become part of the fabric of this city. And unless that happens, you're going to be talking about this in 20 years. Cam Gordon's been here, what, 12 years? Cam, you remember how Cedar Riverside looked like, right? With the potholes, with, 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 with the community being, you know, marginalized? That's, that's unacceptable. That's why I came here. I came here so my community can have a voice. I came here so my community can have a voice that we're not seen as others, you know, that we're not seen as some weird outsiders. And that's what I'm, you know, I support this budget, but we need to do a lot more in economic inclusion. We need to do a lot more in the next couple of years. We need to do a lot more in the next couple of decades because people are hurting in this city, and it's not just about public housing, and it's not just about affordable housing. We are part and parcel of this city. We are part and parcel of this city, and I appreciate all my colleagues' support. Thank you very much. But again, you know, it's, it's been a very difficult year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as I listen to my colleagues, you know, talk about the fact that we can do much better with this budget, I absolutely agree. However, I state that I am proud to vote for this budget tonight. This budget attempts to, to lift up some of the most marginalized people in our community. Councilmember Worsami talks about poverty, and I deeply believe that poverty is a, is a huge issue in our community. And we have in this budget funds to begin child savings accounts. And so, that begins to address this poverty issue with our children. We were able to fund a transgender equity coordinator through this budget, which is something that hasn't even been a discussion on this body. And so, that comes with this budget. We were able to, to really put some resources towards domestic violence, which is one of the most pernicious problems in our society. You know, that's men attacking the women or intimate partners attacking each other, vulnerable communities. And we were able to, to support ending that level of violence in our community. So, I want to state that I am personally going to be able to go home and sleep tonight because this budget, I think, moves our city forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President Bender. I'm also very proud of this budget, and I'm very proud of our city. And I think a budget is always going to be a reflection of the moment in time that we're in, and I want to reflect a little bit on that moment in time because I think it's very important. We are at a moment in time when we just made a historic investment in affordable housing, and that affordable housing has been approved but not yet built, and we can see those resources coming. We approved more than three times what we typically do because of the investment that we made last year, and we are making another huge investment that is going to be impactful in people's lives. We are providing resources to support workers in getting paid what they're owed, and I think that's incredibly exciting, and to support businesses in following the rules in the first place. We are thinking about climate in a more intentional way, particularly thanks to Councilmembers Gordon and Schrader, and I think that that's been incredibly important work. And we are in a moment when, after last year, when we established the Office of Violence Prevention, it is in a moment of growth. And we are seeking a balance, and we are also in a place where we are being called on by our constituents, by all of our constituents, to address safety. And people mean different things by safety when they say it sometimes, but we are in a position to provide the safety that we have the answers for today and also lay the groundwork to have better answers for tomorrow. And I think we've done that, and I think that that's very important. The 911 Work Group is doing critical work to think about how we make sure that we are sending the right response with the right resources at the right time when people are calling for help. And they have ideas. They're going to look for places where that needs to be MPD, either legally it has to be MPD, where it ought to be MPD, and where it ought to be somebody else. And that's going to produce opportunity for us to really shift the way we respond to things and the way we use city resources to make sure that people are supported. We have laid the groundwork for that. It did not happen in time for, for this year's budget. This budget is a snapshot of where we are today. We did something even more important, though, I think, which is that we did the hard work of working together to get to a 13-0 vote to support the Office of Violence Prevention. And that actually has real importance for our city. That is not where we were a year ago. That is something that has happened over a year of conversations, to get to a place that everybody sees violence prevention outside of policing as a part of the approach that our city does, that this is something that the mayor and the council have all agreed to, that anybody working within our city who was wondering, is this a fad? Is this a factional thing that's going to end up losing on some other vote later? That everybody's wondering, is, is this where we're going? We've now said, this is where we're going. This is very clearly 14 to 0. The mayor and the council moving together, this is where we are going. And that means more for the future. And so, for me, I think it's very important that we make that commitment, that we recognize that this is a moment that we're at, that we have set the stage to look at the staffing budget, to look at the way MPD does its budgeting, to make sure we've got the right resources there and, and see where there are resources that might be better placed somewhere else. And I think there are some. I, I agree with the council president on that. I think that we are looking at the 911 work study to see, are there places where it's clear that we could be responding in a better way that produces better outcomes? And I think we are going to find ways to do that, and I think that we are going to see places where we can make clear investments. And so, the commitment that I want to make, it takes work to develop these programs. It takes work to get these programs from an idea to something actionable that we can invest in and that we can hold accountable for results. And that is the work that we have to use our committees for. It's the work that I hope we all use our committees for, to be looking for solutions and to develop these solutions to a point that we can have a significantly more robust budget conversation next year with a lot more options on the table to be looking at, to be looking at how we respond to everybody's safety needs. That being said, I'm so proud of the way that we all work together. I think that there's a lot that we've achieved here. I think we'll continue to do the work of looking at ways that we can implement this put into collaborating, to really thinking these issues through. I want to thank everybody who came and pushed us in every direction that you pushed us. And we are going to continue to grow as a city and to keep doing better, and I'm proud to vote yes today.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, President Bender. I too just want to first just start off with saying thank you to everybody for us being able to get to a place where it's 14-0 around public safety. I have been a very vocal champion of the public health approach to public safety. So again, for folks to know, it's the prevention, intervention, enforcement, and reentry. And we have seen for a long time a sole focus on, on, excuse me, enforcement. And now violence prevention is actually at the center of the conversation consistently. That was not the case not that long ago. I want to make sure to name that a lot of the violence prevention work that we are funding and carrying forward started under the leadership of Betsy Hodges and her senior policy aide Nicole Archbold. And now, when it was once incredibly controversial, now we are in a place where we have worked together and collaborated to be able to get to a place where everyone says that violence prevention is a priority. Violence prevention is something we should be investing in rather than it being something that has to be debated over. It's now, yes, we have to have a more comprehensive approach. A lot of work has gone into building the foundation that we see here in this budget that will, that is opening up the door for us to continue to build on a more comprehensive approach to public safety. Does it go far enough? No, it doesn't. But again, this foundation begins the process of us being able to fully operationalize the Office of Violence Prevention, which by the way, came into existence last November. So it hasn't been around that long. And the fact that last year, when the public safety conversation came up, it was very wrought. And this year, we have done a lot of work and had a lot of conversations throughout the year so that it is considered something that's inherent now in the public safety conversation. So within the Office of Violence Prevention, we have the Violence Prevention Fund, for example. I think $350,000. That is for community-based strategies. Again, is that enough? No, we need more. But we have the foundation there and the infrastructure there to be able to have money going to community members who are carrying out the hard work. Again, as I said on Friday, as a North Sider, I understand that we have the best, we as North Siders have the best answers for the solutions to the challenges that we face. And this is a way to be able to have the city investing in that. Domestic violence is something else that we see an investment in here. Isn't enough? No. But we have last year, for the first time, ongoing money that was put into the Domestic Violence Hot Spots program. And this year, we have foundational dollars that is going to help us begin rolling out an intimate partner violence prevention program that is comprehensive, like the group violence intervention program. It's data-driven, it's in partnership with John Jay College. Like, there is an infrastructure that we are putting into place to grow something that is desperately needed. Domestic violence is an intergenerational issue, and we have children, we know that it's the number one reason for 911 calls, which means that we have a lot of kids around our entire city who is being exposed to violence in the home. And that trauma impacts them for the rest of their lives. So the foundations that we're putting in place right now will help us be able to grow those efforts to be able to get to the root of childhood trauma for a lot of the kids that we have in our community. And again, like I said, it's still not enough, but we got a lot of work still ahead of us. But as some of my other colleagues have said, I am here committed, continue to be committed as the person who has been fighting very hard for violence prevention since I got into office as a baseline. Like, it shouldn't be controversial. It should be apolitical. It should be something, because we know that it works, that the data, the evidence is there that it works. And so I look forward to continuing to champion this work and these efforts going forward. And the way that I see it is that this, this year is the foundation. It's the baseline. We are now in a place where everybody believes that violence prevention is inherent in public safety. It may feel kind of obvious to those of us who are on the ground and understand the work and who see the data, but the, that is not always the case with policy. And so we've gotten there. And so I want to just say thank you to everybody who was a part of the conversations. They were challenging conversations, and I look forward to us continuing throughout the upcoming year to build on these efforts now. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say something a little more positive than I did in my first speech. I think I got myself down in a pretty, pretty low, low point there. But I appreciate that some of you mentioned the climate issues that were brought forward, and we got some more funding to restore there. I think that's fantastic, and I think that it's really important that we talk about that as such a critical feature. And we're doing so much, even at the last meetings of this year, to do that. We actually have a green cost share program that I just learned today was oversubscribed to just in the first round for next year. There were 173 applicants. They were requesting over $2 million and potentially leveraging $13 million more. I'm looking forward to going on with funding that into the future, but also with next year, looking at how can we create a real Minneapolis Green New Deal that can benefit people and also be part of the economic inclusion that we're all talking about to end addressing climate change? Because I think we have an opportunity to find some, some real ways to reduce carbon emissions and lead as a city. And that's also what our residents want to do, and we certainly heard about that a lot.
Thank you. Any further comments on item two? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion carries and the 2020 general appropriation resolution is adopted. The next order of business is a proposed five-year capital improvement program for years 2020 through 2024. Councilmember Palmasano, I'll recognize you to present that report.
Madam President, I move adoption of a resolution adopting the city's five-year capital improvement program covering fiscal years 2020 to 2024 and fixing the maximum amounts for 2020 to be expended by the various funds under the city council.
Jamar Clark, killed by MPD.
Jamar Clark, Jamar Clark, Jamar Clark!
19 years old, shot by MPD.
Transferred and killed by MPD welfare check.
Justine Demond, killed by MPD domestic violence law.
Courtney Williams, killed by MPD, 15 years old, carrying a toy gun. Officer never indicted. Courtney Williams.
Thurman Glevins Jr., killed by MPD, 31 years old, shot from behind.
Thurman Glevins Jr.
David Smith, killed by MPD, very well helped crisis.
David Smith.
Okay, Councilmember Palmasano has moved adoption of the 2019 through 2023 capital improvement program. It's actually 2020 through 2024 capital improvement program. Is there any discussion on this motion? I don't see any. I'm going to put myself in Q. There's never any discussion on the capital improvement program. But I do want to just pause to comment that I got a lot of questions from my constituents about our investments in Vision Zero, and that plan will come forward on Friday. There was some concern that there was a particular item that was $100,000 specific for this work and no more. And I do think that we are investing in really meaningful ways in pedestrian and bicycle safety through our capital improvement program, as well as other important priorities related to climate change, the impacts of climate change, flooding, sustainable stormwater management, and many things in this capital budget that reflect the values that we've been talking about. I do think that there is a question going forward, and I wanted to voice that today, which is, as we look at our Vision Zero plan and the forthcoming Transportation Action Plan, I think there will be some big, bold ideas about how to really make meaningful change in our streets. And in order to do that, we may need to revisit and continue to rethink how we program capital funds for street projects. We have evolved that in recent years to move away from only designating capital funds for specific street projects, which has been one of the reasons that street funding in particular is very inflexible to target specific safety improvements or problems in the community, for example, the intersection that Councilmember Fletcher raised earlier. And so I think in, over time, we have added more funds for standalone safety improvements. We have a standalone fund specific for implementing the Protected Bike Way program, and it is part of why we've been able to meet our goal of building 30 miles of protected bikeways. We're actually going to meet that a little earlier than anticipated. But in order to really invest in the kinds of things that are coming forward in the Vision Zero Transportation Action Plan, I think we will need to continue to push that even farther and continue to put in standalone funding for pedestrian safety improvements. So I think there's a lot of great things in this capital program and some more questions. I hope that the, the Click Committee will be engaged in some of those policy-level discussions. We've been hearing from them that they want more to do and more meaningful involvement. And I think this policy discussion is a great place to get their input, as well as input from our constituents, as we talk about the Transportation Action Plan next year that will come through the TPW Committee. So those are my comments about capital programming. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that is adopted. Next, we have a series of bonding resolutions that total just under $93 million, all of which are reflected in Agenda Items 4 through 8. Each of these actions requested the Board of Estimate and Taxation authorize the city to incur indebtedness to issue bonds for specific purposes as listed on the agenda. And those are all tied to the approved 2020 capital improvement program. Organize Councilmember Palmasano for that committee report.
Madam President, as you noted, the Budget Committee is forwarding five resolutions requesting that the Board of Estimate and Taxation authorize the issuance and sale of city bonds in a total amount of $93,904,000, which is all tied to the 2020 capital program and within the five-year capital bonding period of 2020 to 2024. I move approval of all five resolutions reflected in Items 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 on the agenda.
Thank you. Chair Palmasano, is there any discussion on her motion for adoption of the bonding resolutions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that item is adopted. Those rates for municipal services have been established. Those will become effective January 1st, 2020. Councilmember Palmasano has moved item nine. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that item is adopted. Those rates for municipal services have been established. Those will become effective January 1st, 2020. So with that, we've completed the actions on the agenda related to the 2020 budget. Before we adjourn, I will just make, be very brief, make a few comments. I just want to thank Councilmember Palmasano for all of your work, chairing our Budget Committee, along with your vice-chair, Councilmember Fletcher. You added a public hearing last year, creating more availability for folks to come at a different time of day. I think that's helped add transparency earlier in the process so that we have more time to respond. And I know you both did an incredible amount of work to create a supportive environment that councilmembers could bring forward ideas and really be supported by both of you. I want to thank the finance staff. I know you've been working around the clock many days and nights, and we really appreciate you so far, so much for going so far above and beyond, just, you know, talking about the budget and really bringing those values that all of us have. You've been a great partner to the city council in our work to shape this budget, and it really means a lot to us. And thank you to our interim city coordinator. I know you've been supporting the finance staff in their work. And then thank you so much to everyone who's engaged in our process. We had a lot of energy and passion that came forward into the budget process, and I know it really made a big difference in the work that we did to shape this budget. I know it will continue to shape future budgets going forward. And so your voices really matter. We appreciate so much the time that everyone took. I'll see if there are any other announcements from councilmembers. I don't see any. So that completes our agenda for today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries and we are adjourned. Thank you again. Have a great night.